Good, thank you. We'll call this portion of the meeting back to order. Our land acknowledgement.
Respectfully acknowledge that the County Halliburton is located on a Treaty 20 Michisagi territory and in a traditional territory, the Michisagi and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaty's first nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants and stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial.
Yes, thank you, Warden Burton. And in recognition, and the reason we're all wearing our red shirts today is in recognition of National Accessibility Week and with council's permission, I'll read a proclamation to be passed. The County Halliburton is proud to recognise May 25th and 31st, 2025 as National Accessibility Week and today, May 28th, 2025 as Red Shirt Day of Action for Accessibility and Inclusion. Throughout Ontario, approximately 2.6 million people or one in four citizens have a disability. We know that in Halliburton County, as our population ages, the number of people with disabilities in our society will increase. It has always been important to work towards a more accessible, inclusive community by identifying, removing and preventing barriers for those of us with disability and those of us who will experience disability in the future. The County Halliburton and our local municipalities are guided by the county's Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. We are grateful for their ongoing thoughtful input as we actively work to further accessibility and inclusion in our community through advice, advocacy and meaningful recommendations. Our joint accessibility plan details some of the strategies and actions we know we can take to help ensure that we meet the needs of people with disabilities in a timely and considerate manner. Today on Red Shirt Day, we invite all residents to wear red and invisible show of support and solidarity and encourage all residents to reflect on the barriers, both visible and invisible, that limit inclusion. To celebrate the contributions and achievements of the people with disabilities and to commit to work together in building a community where everyone can thrive, we pass the following proclamation. Whereas National Accessibility Week is an opportunity to promote inclusion and accessibility in communities and workplaces across Canada and to recognise the contributions of persons with disabilities. And whereas this week reminds us of the importance of breaking down barriers and fostering a society where everyone has the opportunity to participate fully and equally regardless of ability. And whereas Red Shirt Day observed on the Wednesday of National Accessibility Week encourages Canadians to wear red in solidarity with people living with disabilities and to promote an accessible, inclusive country for all. Now therefore, Dave Burton, Warden of the County Halliburton do hereby proclaim May 25th to 31st, 2025 as National Accessibility Week and May 28th, 2025 as Red Shirt Day in the County Halliburton.
I had a letter that was sent to me that I would like to share with council this morning just quickly, but it's a pretty important letter that came along. It says, Dear Warden Burton, Long Service Recognition Awards Programme of the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, KAMA, is dedicated to honouring and celebrating the dedication of our members of the public service and municipal management, a cornerstone priority for our association. These awards are based on the duration of full-time paid employment in municipal government, specifically in management roles such as Chief Administration Officer or those reporting directly to them. Recognition is granted at a 10-year mark and subsequently in five-year intervals. This year is our privilege to acknowledge the commitment of your Chief Administration Officer, Gary Dyke, for his remarkable 35 years of service in the municipal government and management roles. Gary's dedication to his role has undoubtedly contributed to the advancement of your municipality and we are pleased to recognise his achievements. His recognition pin has been mailed to him directly. We invite you to assist in us recognising Gary for this milestone, perhaps through a special presentation of council in acknowledgement of his continued support of the municipal profession. Thank you, Gary. Is there any disclosure of particular interest? No? The agenda?
That the May 28th, 2025 Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved.
Can someone move? Councillor Carter, Second Bay Councillor Brown. All in favour? Okay. Just.
I just had someone from the, a member of the public reach out saying that the YouTube link was incorrect and it's somebody that probably should know, so I'm just, just wanted to bring that to the attention of IT just to double check maybe before we get going too far.
Well, just take a quick break.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll take the, thank you, we'll take it.
Thank you. This morning we have presentations to testing the waters, water quality testing for Halliburton County Lakes, Ulink Centre for Community-Based Research, Andrew Gordon, Director of Ulink's and Jim Prince, co-chair. And I think Elizabeth is going to lead us.
Yes, thank you, Warden Burton. So as council is aware, Ulink's has been undertaking water quality testing on behalf of the county for a couple of seasons now. As you noted, Jim Prince and Andrew Gordon from Ulink's are here with us today to provide council with an overview of the water quality testing programme that has been underway to date. As well with the 2025 season set to commence shortly, they are also going to provide an outlook for this year for council's information. And just as an aside, they'll be back in front of council later this summer to present their 2024 comprehensive report on the programme for everyone's benefit. So with that, I will hand it over to Jim and Andrew. Thank you.
So thank you very much. Thank you, Elizabeth, for inviting us. Always a pleasure to appear before council and even if Elizabeth hadn't invited us, we'd be happy to be back here anytime. So I'm Andy Gordon, I'm the Director of Ulink's.
Yeah, I'm Jim Prince, I'm the co-chair of Ulink's. I'm Jim Prince, I'm the co-chair of Ulink's and the Chair of Woodlands and Waterways EcoWatch. I'm also here as a recipient of the work for Ulink's because I am a Vice President and Stewardship Director of the Kinesis Lake Cottage Association.
So today we're going to be talking about testing the water, just bringing you up to speed on the water quality testing programme for Halliburton County Lakes. It started back in 2022. This is a fee-for-service arrangement that Ulink's has with the support of the county. Next slide, please. So just a few words about Ulink's. We've been in the county forever, about 35 years, 25 years with the Ulink's hat on. We're part of the Halliburton County Community Co-op, we're not-for-profit and basically our role is, we're research brokers. So if you're an organisation in the county of any type, cultural, environmental business and you have a problem that you can't solve, you can come to us, we'll help you formulate that problem and then we'll reach out to our academic partners, principally Trent University, but we work with some others as well too. We'll find the brightest, hardest working students at the fourth year level and they'll come up to Halliburton County with their profs, they'll solve your problem 99% of the time for free and they get a really good experiential learning experience out of the whole thing. So we work in, we work in all sectors, although about 80% of our work is in the environment right now. And since inception, we've, we've run about 3,000 students through the programme on about 600 different projects and they're all listed on our, our website. And the collective nature of those projects has, has brought more vitality and made Halliburton County a better place to live, work and breed. So it's really important to remember that the research is driven by the community, so it's not a ivory tower professor that's, that's reaching down and telling you this is the type of research you need. It actually comes from the community upwards and in this particular case with this programme, it was the lake associations that came to us and said, we've got all this data, we don't know what to do with it, we don't know if we're testing the right thing. So that's actually where the Testing the Waters Programme came from. It came from the lake associations and other community members from the bottom up. Next slide, please. So as, as parents, you probably have had exasperated sons and daughters in, in the past, no more so than my son on the day that this photograph was taken because I was coming up 121, supposed to drop him at high school when I looked forward and saw the Dicard staff was changing the sign that's at the corner of Glurt Road and, and 121. And so I kept driving, much to his annoyance, and managed on a green light to get my phone up and take a snapshot of the sign. So many of you might not notice, but this particular sign alerts people to what's going on in theatre and community barbecues and different organisations. But every once in a while, when they change the placards and the sign, it reveals what was behind the very original sign, which has been there for decades. And as you can see, it says, explore our lakes. And so I think this is a very good historical reminder to us that the 600 lakes that we have in the county and especially the water quality in them has been very good for our, our own personal health as citizens, but it's also been really good for the economic health of the great county of Halliburton. So we use these waters for leisure and, and recreation activities, swimming, boating, bathing, travelling and, and fishing. We all benefit from them. We bring lots of our relatives and friends up here and they tell other people about them. And so it really is a boon to the economic backbone of, of the county. And just as an example, just at the start of this month, Watersheds Canada, which is a national organisation, decided to host or to hold their annual general meeting here in Halliburton County. Because we have headwater lakes, most of them are pristine, some of them are a little impacted, but where those lakes are impacted, we have concerned organisations like Ulink's and the CHA and council members and the citizenry that really believe that the quality of these lakes is really important. So they brought 100 people here to the county, all of them spent three days here and spent an awful lot of money. It's a really successful conference. And just a shout out to, to Pinestone, this old girl is not dead yet. It's a, it's a beautiful venue, all of the participants really appreciated it. And so anything the county can do basically to help the Pinestone survive as it goes through its management changes is, is really good because we really need this facility in the province. Of course, we also use our, our lakes as recipients for our wastewater and for sewage and other things who have to be very cognizant that good septic inspection programmes are really important to, to keep up on water quality. So we're really happy from a Ulink's perspective that, that this is proceeding. It's also important, I think, to, to remember that we should be the best neighbours that, that we can, can be. So it may come as a shock, but there are actual people who, who can't live in Halliburton County and, and have to live at lower watersheds. And to those people, we hand off 2.1 billion cubic metres. So there's a cubic metre, there times 2.1 billion on an annual basis, cubic metres of slightly used water every year. And so it's probably in our best moral and possibly legal interest to make sure that they are getting the best water that we can possibly hand off to them. And so a, a well-tuned water quality testing programme is going to be one way in which you can be able to do this in perpetuity. Next slide, please. Of course, there are a lot of threats to these lakes when you put cottages at a, any type of density around the lake, you're going to potentially impact the general water quality, the water health of the lake, which impacts our ability to drink it and, and healthy fish populations. Therefore, as I've said, it's important to, to make sure that the septic systems are working correctly. Shoreline vegetation removal, we've had lots of discussion about this and most informed scientists would tell you that that's not a very good thing to do with respect to water quality. So very happy to see that in, in the county, we have the cognizance of that. Invasive species is another big issue, plant, animal, fish, we're at the headwaters, so it doesn't impact us maybe as much as some of the lower waters, but they are here. Some of them we're never going to eradicate, so we have to learn what their life cycles are and how we can learn to, to live with them and how they're going to impact other types of organisms in the lakes. Microplastics, unfortunately, we're not going to talk about it too much today, but microplastics, we have them here in Halliburton Lakes, about the same level as we have in many other lakes in more populated regions in southern Ontario. And we can tackle this problem by making sure that we don't abandon docks and leave pieces of rope and plastic floating around, around the lakes, but it is a serious problem. And then of course, there's impacts from watercraft and, and wake in terms of shoreline erosion and the impact on, on habitats of nesting birds such as loons. All of these problems are understood and collectively working together across all political stripes, we'll be able to deal with them. One of the ones that has raised its head in recent years is the blue-green algae events. So these are very nasty, toxic things that can actually kill people. And we've seen in Halliburton County over the last eight to 10 years, a serious increase in them. So we have to be very cognizant and watching for them. Next slide, please. So you are not alone in, in developing a water quality testing programme. Neighbours to the west have been doing this for a long time. This just came out in the Examiner just a couple of weeks ago, basically. So the Core of the Conservation has, has just launched a Core of the Wide Water Quality Testing Programme. And since we correspond quite a bit with them, it wouldn't surprise us that we see actual, actual aspects of the Halliburton County testing programme in their programme as they, as they roll it out. So Halliburton County is in really good stead. This is where most of the counties across the province are, are going. Next slide, please. So today we're going to talk a little bit about the Testing the Waters Programme, what it is, some of the chemical and physical parameters that we measure, how the, the fee-for-service contract is progressing and why the collection of water quality data and the analysis of it can help you sustain your lake health into the future. We have time at the end, we'll entertain questions about where we go from here. And the photographs on the right just show the, the intergenerational combination of youthful individuals that come to us from Trent University and some of our older citizen scientists who have a really good time in the boats when they're out sampling. A lot of agreement on music and/or politics, but they have very good exchange of information. So it's been a very, very, very positive programme to get citizens engaged in, in terms of looking at water quality. Next slide, please. So the Testing the Waters Programme started back in 2022. We, we started out working with 10 lake associations. At the end of that programme, which was a one-year programme, we told council, we, we would attempt to double it in the next go-around and we're very happy to report that we've actually been able to do more than that. We're working with about 25 lake associations now, that's about half of them in the county across 39 of our biggest, most utilised lakes and at 61 sampling sites. The programme is largely supported by Halliburton County, but a slew of other partners and contributors as well too. So to every one of those, especially to Halliburton County, thanks very much. Just incidentally, the programme started out as a 50/50 cost share between the county and, and Ulink's with what we've been able to bring to the table in terms of our other, other partners. It's probably closer to 65 us, 35 you, so we think it's probably a pretty good deal for you. If you cost it out on a, on a township basis, it's about $12,500 at the present time per township per, per year for what you're getting on this. Next slide, please. So here's an overview of the county. The yellow and the red pins indicate lakes where we're actually sampling for water chemical and physical parameters such as secudits, which Jim will demonstrate in a, in a minute. The green ones are biological monitoring sites. So in previous presentations, I've indicated to you that we also monitor for benthic invertebrates. These are very small organisms that are very sensitive to polluted lakes. And that programme is hand-in-hand with Testing the Waters, but is independent in the sense that there's no county money that goes into that. We run that on the backs of Trent, Trent students. And most of our lakes that we've been sampling now are at the five-year point. So we're going to be able to start to put together a county-wide picture on the health of lakes with respect to these benthic invertebrates. So as you'll see, we've covered pretty much all of the county, we hope in the next iteration to, to expand it. The, the north-eastern corner of the county where there's no sampling done, that's Algonquin Park, they have their own water quality sampling programme, it's pretty pristine up there. And so we don't do any sampling up in that neck of the woods at all. Next slide, please. Many of you have seen this diagram before and it's a little bit busy, so I just would like to go through it. Down the left-hand side, we have parameter measured. So most of those are chemical in nature, there's some physical ones such as secudeth, which again Jim will explain in a minute, and total suspended solids. There's 118 elements and if you wanted to, you could go out and measure every water sample for all 118 elements and you'd be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. So over the last 50 years, basically, many water quality sampling programmes around the world have come to realise that these ones indicated are the most biologically important ones. And not every water quality sampling programme samples all of these. So across the top, we have five programmes that have been at work in Halliburton County. The one on the left is the Lake Partner Programme, which has been in the news recently because that is a government-funded programme, but it's run by volunteers and, and citizen scientists. It's a very good programme and it runs in five-year cycles. And the end of this five-year cycle coincided with the recent election. So Ulink's, the CHA, Lake Associations, other organisations have written to the government saying that this is a good programme and it, and it should indeed continue. And we don't think that it's anything other than just an electoral blip, we're pretty confident that it is going to continue. You can see though that it is probably underfunded. The green bars indicate parameters that have, that are sampled in each particular programme, the red bars ones that not. So you'll see that the LPP only samples four things and it's only done once a year. The next two, the MECP and the MNRF are government-run programmes. You'll see that they are very extensive, they sample a lot of different parameters, but you'll see that the MECP, which is Ministry of the Environment, they only concentrate on lake trout lakes and they come back every eight to 10 years. And, and actually COVID has thrown a wrench into their works and so it's been quite some time since we've seen MECP in the county. In fact, Ulink's has, has been working fairly closely with the Dorset Centre to see if we can turn that around on the verge of developing a relationship with them. The next one over, MNRF's Broad-Scale Monitoring, they measure everything. However, they only do it every four to five years and, and in fact, in Halliburton County, not very many of our lakes are actually sampled by MNRF. Jim can speak to this, but some of the larger lake associations that have more cottage members on them and have deeper financial pockets can conduct their own water quality sampling programmes and Kinesis Lake has been one of them. They have now rolled theirs into our programme, which is Testing the Waters Programme, which is on the, on the right. Our programme is, is unique from all of the others. We sample actually three times a year, so we're the most intensive programme. We don't sample every parameter, but the parameters that we, we do sample have been selected in consultation with a, a, a number of limnological experts that we've brought to Halliburton County on two occasions to advise us on which ones they would sample. The programme is designed so that if we see something change in one particular parameter that needs more effort, we can drop one out, add another one. And we can drop one out, add another one and within the confines of the financial constraints that we have. The other thing that's unique about our program is that we test under the ice. So one of our three year samplings is under the ice. This is quite important. In fact, there were some scientists on the radio just three or four days ago saying that we need more under ice testing. And the reason for that is that lakes aren't dead come November and they don't come back to life in April. There's all sorts of stuff that goes on underneath the ice. Some of that is natural and if fed with too much phosphorus, for example, some of that can lead to the explosion of blue green early in the spring. So that's not a good thing. So we do sample under the ice. The other important thing, especially in Halliburton County, is that 37 of our lakes are drawdown lakes for the Trent Severn System. Really, there's not a lot of information on what the ecological impacts of that drawdown is. We're not going to change that fact that the lakes are drawdown. But if we can understand the actual biological or ecological impacts of that drawdown, then we may be able to mitigate things so that we can continue to have good water quality throughout the county. So I'll pass it off to Jim here. I'm not sure if you want to say anything else about that.
Thanks, Andy. A couple more comments. Thanks, Andy. A couple more comments on this slide. In the first year of the program, one of the things we did is we collected the data from inception of all these programs to compile it to look at the long term trend. And that took us about a year because much of this data is just not published openly. So the Lake Partner Program is pretty good, except the information from 21 to 2025 is just being made available now. So there's a lag of three to four years sometimes. Whereas the Testing the Waters program, we're issuing it as soon as we get the data, issuing it to the lake associations. And as Andy said, the MECP Lake Trout and MNRF, that data is sort of available, but it's really hard for lake associations and community folks to dig it, mine it and use it properly. So one of the things we've done is collected all that data. I'll show you a couple of slides of the complete data from the early 90s and what you might be able to do with that. So that's an additional benefit of the Lake Partner, sorry, of the Testing the Waters program. One thing to note is in the Lake Partner Program, through the work we did in the Water Quality Summits and the Limnologists, they suggested that we continue to use calcium and chloride from the Lake Partner Program rather than double spending and doing that in our program. So that's an additional benefit of using data from the Lake Partner Program. That's why you see no in our program for calcium and chloride. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been able to deliver from 2022 to 2024. It's by the numbers. So we've executed 6,600 physical water quality measurements. So that's conductivity, pH measurements, alkalinity through device sampling through secudis. I'll talk about the secudis sampling in a minute. We've done 2,900 water chemistry sample tests. So those are dips, sample bottles that look at chemicals constituents such as total phosphorus. Though all that chemical analysis, it's where the lake associations have skin in the game, they pay for that. That's the contribution from the lake associations. And again, skin in the game from the lake associations, 1,300 volunteer hours, 2,000 hours of training and about 150 people driving boats taking the samples. So a week and a half ago, on the day after Victoria Day, I was out in the boat with three other people and a driver. We sampled the five basins in Kinesis Lake. We had to jump out of the big boat for a while because the water's so high, couldn't get under a bridge, got into a tinny and did the sampling about half a day. And we do that twice a year and hike out onto the ice once a year to do that kind of sampling. So it's better being in a boat half a day sometimes than being in an office. So it's good. Again, 39 lake associations and sorry, 25 lake associations and 39 lakes right across the county. Next slide. One of the hard deliverables is the reports to the lake association. So you can see in 2022 and 2023, in the program inception, that we were delivering to 10 lake associations. And in 2024, we increased that to 25. So each lake association gets a report and a summary report for the county is delivered to the county as part of the fee for service program. Next slide. So what? We're collecting all this data, what are we doing with it? I'm going to tell you a little bit about what you might be able to do with the data, what we could do with the data as a community, what we can do with it as lake associations and turn that into data health messaging and how to keep your lakes healthy. So the water quality data, it does put tool the hands of lake associations to encourage their community to protect the watersheds in Halliburton. And this is directly, we did this a couple of weeks ago at the spring meeting of the KLCOA. Other lake associations are doing the same thing. The messaging example that I gave at our KLCOA annual spring meeting was that most of the water quality results show excellent to good results. We do have good, healthy lakes. And we compare that to Stocking Lake in Halliburton Forest, which is our reference lake. So we show the difference between how the Kinesis Lakes are doing and other lakes and Stocking Lake, which has no people, no population, no nutrients added because there are no septic systems. What did we show in that particular example? There's the total phosphorus is trending steady and I'll show us an example of where it peaked up and maybe there's some good news about that. And the water clarity in our lakes is declining over time. So we've got data from the early 90s till now that shows that declining. And that's an indication of nutrient loading in the lake. Definitely some climate change impacts. We may be able to tell the difference between the two if we look at a reference lake, which doesn't have the nutrients from humans and the populated lakes and interpret something that there's still more work to do. This is an early program, but these are indicators that we can look at. And what's the message we can give to the lake associations and the folks in our Halliburton community? Manage the septic systems properly and keep our shorelines natural. And the best part is every municipality in the county are doing work in those areas. You've got legislation, you've got law bylaws, you've got programs. And if we keep them up, we're heading in the right direction. So next slide. So this is an example from the Kinesis Lakes and we have examples from all of the lakes that we've been testing. And as Andy was saying, we've started collecting the data in 1992 to 2024. And this particular is water clarity. Water clarity is measured by dropping a disc into the water from boat. And you look at the disc and when that disc disappears, you take a meter measurement. And it indicates the amount of material in the lake. It could be algae, it could be turbidity. And it's a long term measurement that's done and it's a really simple measurement that gives you essentially water clarity. It was invented by a guy named Angelo Seki in the 1700s. He was an Italian priest, if you're interested, and he was an oceanographer and an astronomer. Who knows how he came up with this? He was interested, he was curious about the Mediterranean, but now it's used for freshwater testing all over the world. So if you look at this data from the Kinesis Lakes, in the early 90s on Big K, we were able to, we were measuring in eight and nine meters deep and we've dropped now down to six or seven meters. And that's real data over all that time. So on the far left hand side, some of it's Lake Partner, some of it's MECP. But the stuff on the right hand side is all the testing that we've been done in the last little while because there is no data from those other sources. The other important thing about water clarity is it isn't really fair to compare lake to lake. So Little Kinesis, you see that the water clarity is actually worse, but it has much more. The water coming from the forest around it has an awful lot of tannin. So it's a browner lake than Big K, which is more green, more blue green, more blue clear. So the most important measurement is the measurement over time of the degradation of the clarity. And you can see that the results are consistent. And once again, we haven't done this here, but you can look at the clarity change in Stocking Lake and say how much of that is impact over time and how much of that is actually the impact of us using the lakes. Okay, next slide. So this one's a total phosphorus data and there's some interesting work that probably needs to be done in the future. But also you can maybe make some conclusions, draw some conclusions with what we've seen here. So in 2015 and 2016, actually it was supposed to be only 2015, the MECP came to do the lake trout testing lake on Kinesis Lake. They don't tell you they're coming. They don't tell the lake associations or the municipalities or the county, they just come and do it. And if you don't get the data unless you ask for it, and we happen to ask for it. And we got to be fairly friendly with Dana Kropchank, who came and did the work, fabulous limnologist. And he tested Little K at the time and he looked at the total phosphorus and some of the other constituents, including nitrogen compounds. And he said, you've got a septic problem in this lake. They had peaked up and they were much worse than the Big Lake and in particular in one basin. So and he said, I'm going to ask my bosses to come back the next year. And he did, came back in 2016, it was a little bit better, but they were still high. And he said, you guys need to start a testing program because nobody's going to look after this lake except you. And that's how the Kinesis Lake program started and then morphed into the Testing the Waters program. So we started testing and we were green and fresh and didn't know what to do. Again, leaned back on U-Links for help. But the really important thing here is in that short trend from sort of 2010 to 2016, if you looked at only that data, the trend was up in terms of total phosphorus. And that green line across is the line where above that it's bad and below that is good. Generally, that's a measurement for lake trout lakes and for the potential occurrence of blue green algal events. That's why the 10 micrograms per liter is an important number. But again, a little bit more work needs to be done. But if you all recall, we all implement, all the municipalities implemented septic inspection programs, mandatory septic inspection programs and DICERTs launched in 2018 and 19, the Kinesis Lakes. Because we were a little noisy, we were the first ones. And we had an exceptional program, which is a level four type inspection. And we had about a third of our septics were damaged or had to be replaced. That happened. And now we've got what looks to be better total phosphorus. We need to do some more work to connect those dots. But if we can keep doing work like this and connecting those dots, this is really good news. So it's a message, we'll work with DICERT to see if we can get the, especially the Little K data to see how many septics were actually had major repairs. And I know Carl's been collecting that data, so it's available. But if we can start doing trends like this and look at the impact of what the programs are doing and get real data to support it, that's the right way to go. Next slide. Okay, and just to summarize, this fee for service contract, what are the contract deliverables? We've tried to formalize it like a contract so that it pushes both of us to make sure that you're getting the things you want from us. The testing program, we declare the number of lakes and sites to be sampled. We do quarterly reports for the county that go to Elizabeth. We update the progress on field testing if we're delayed. So a couple of winters ago, we had a real problem getting out on the ice. We had to drop a couple of on ice samples because the ice wasn't very thick. The Lake Association reports when they're issued and we make sure they're all done. And then the data upload to Datastream, which we haven't measured, all the data is uploaded to a national water quality databases called Datastream run by the Gordon Foundation. And then we do the annual Halliburton Countywide Report. The other benefit we think of this is that the water quality team has delivered over 25 presentations to lake association, community groups, universities, research forums on telling the story about the county of Halliburton and acknowledging the leadership in sponsoring the Testing the Waters program. And again, that's one of the reasons Watersheds Canada came to Halliburton County, had a national conference here. It's because we're starting to be recognized as doing the right thing for the environment. So all good. Next slide. I think back over to you, Andy.
Yeah, I just got a couple more slides here. I just wanted to say something about one of Jim's slides, the water clarity. So the long term trend looks like water clarity is declining in our lakes. Some of that is actually okay because you have to think back to the 60s when we had a lot of acid rain and the lakes were clear as a bell. We actually need some turbidity and some dissolved organic matter sitting in the water column. So some of that is due to usage on the lakes and some of that is a natural trend where the lakes are actually becoming a little bit more cloudy naturally. So I just wanted to end with this. So we've had a long term relationship with Trent University. Love them or hate them, work like this, you need to have universities involved because they can bring a lot of resources to the table in terms of students and other ways that they can get financing and resources. So last year around this time, we upped our ante with Trent. We signed an MOU with them on the research side of things and it's highlighted and read up there. This MOU is specifically dealing with issues related to water quality in the county of Halliburton. It's a little bit selfish on their part because of course they're very concerned about the quality of water that is flowing through the Trent Severn System, right past the president of Trent University's office. But on the other hand, they also have an extremely broad interest in looking at algal blooms, microplastics and health related contamination of drinking water in the upstream areas of the Trent Severn System. So this is very good. We also made sure that in that MOU, that the other sectors that we work in, the social, cultural, economic ones were not ignored as well. So that's all in there as well. We're still working out the details with it because it doesn't come with any money attached to it. It comes with a promise to work together collaboratively. So we have great hopes for this. Next slide, please. And finally, I just wanted to let you know how the impact of student efforts can really benefit us. So when you collect a lot of data, lots of times it's very difficult to condense it in a way such that it's it's useful for municipal councillors or lake associations or individuals, et cetera, et cetera. And so we approached a group of software engineering students at Trent University in their fourth year and said, help us out here. We've got all this data, we need a way to visualize it. I can't show you an interactive version of this, this is just a screenshot. But down the left hand side, if this was on your computer screen, you could go down and check off whatever element you wanted to take a look at. You could then go to the map of Halliburton County and click on your particular lake. And it would then combine all of the data that you see at the bottom, the historical MNR, MOECP, R data, the LPP data, any data collected by lake associations and will give you a trend line over the last 20 or 30 years for what's happening in your lake. If you then want to compare it to your neighbor's lake, they can come along and click on their lake and you'll have two lakes. And so we're really excited about this. This is sort of the beta version of it, but it's almost up and running. And this will again, will be public and will be available to you as council to use as you see fit. With collectively our biological data and the water quality data, we're almost at the point where we can take a snapshot of the county and tell you this looks like a hotspot area right here. We've got some problems going on. This area over here is clear. And with that, we'll be able to make some management recommendations as to what you might be able to do to improve the water quality in that particular area. So that's all we have at the present time. I think we probably went a little bit over what we were supposed to do. But if there's any questions that you have now, we'd be happy to answer them. Of course, our emails are there and you'd be happy to email us with any particular questions, queries that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Ra.
Yeah, the ongoing war for green algae is just everybody's concern. So without getting too deep into the weeds, what I'd like to do is ask a three part question. One, with green algae, when the lakes go to sleep in the winter, in the fall, they wake up in the spring, does the algae die with it and then regrow? That would be the first question. And the second part of that same question is it's cyclic in the sense that it grows to a certain point, dies off and then it ends there. And the third part of the question is, in your recent experience, are the number of blooms increasing, holding level or decreasing?
Want me to start? Go ahead. Thanks, Councilor Raell. So the first one is about, does it go to sleep? And that's a good question. I don't know. I'm not a blue green algal expert, but I've seen enough of information about the blooms here in Halliburton County. I can answer some of the other questions. I don't know about blooms under the ice, but typically an indicator of whether there's going to be a bloom or not is the total phosphorus. There's some work out there, which I have actually got in my notes here. Some lakes have seen blue green algal blooms even with lower total phosphorus than I indicated there at the 10 micrograms per liter. Typically, algal blooms and the ones we've seen, we've had three on Kinesis Lake. There've been blooms all over the county. I think it's upwards of in the 20s or 30s over the last eight to 10 years. I'm going to drift for a second. No one is tracking them. And that's an objective of a number of us in the county. We can't really get anybody's attention to track them. Our health unit probably ought to be tracking them and they aren't. In Muskoka, they are tracked very well by the health unit. And we've actually, as lake associations got together and approached the health unit and they've fed back to us that they feel like there's a liability issue around tracking them. We don't necessarily buy that. So there's an opportunity there. Typically, the algal blooms we've had, we've had three on Kinesis, they've been related very specifically to weather condition. They're unique. Weather conditions, hot, calm and stirred up bottom. And usually that's when the blooms will occur. And one of the other problems we have is getting, not necessarily getting response, but getting timely response from MECP, who are the only organization authorized to come and verify that it's a blue green algal bloom. And so on Kinesis Lake, one of the three had a verification. through other limnologists that we consult with and send photographs of the bloom, conditions of the bloom. They've said, that's absolutely a blue green algal bloom. Fortunately, even the, the one we did test, most of them come out as non-toxic, which is good. But the idea of monitoring them and determining toxic, non-toxic trending that where they're happening, when they could happen, one on Kinesis Lake in particular, it happened on the Mon- Monday after the Labor Day weekend in twenty twenty-three, twenty-two-three, I think, yeah. And it was in a bay where there was lots of boat traffic, a shallow bay. And I talked a little bit about the total phosphorus measurement in the bulk of the lake. The phosphorus hides out in the muck. And if the muck stirred up, you get the, the phosphorus, the total phosphorus in the lake and the algal blooms. And that's, that's what happens. So it can be, it's typically local and it's typically event based like that. That help, help with most of the answers?
Yeah.
Yeah. With respect to under ice, there really just isn't enough known. Just anecdotally, my in-laws live on Spruce Lake. And after ice went out about three years ago, there was a very small blue green algae bloom, which I don't believe was, was reported. It came out of the middle of nowhere and it was still me, basically. So a, a, again, the, under the ice sampling component of the testing waters program will start to build data that hopefully will feed into some of the things that Jim has said. And we'll get to the bottom of those questions.
And perhaps one more. One of the opportunities is, is that because we are required, you actually report blue green algal blooms through the spills hotline. That's the way you do it. It's on most of our websites, on CHA website. There's good communication about it. But again, the MECP doesn't always respond. Having citizen scientists have test kits would be fantastic, because then we would start collecting data and it's easy. It's not rocket science, water science, but not rockets. Yeah.
Other questions, Councilor Carter?
I think what's really evident here is how much we don't know. And, you know, the, the best way of trying to determine whether there is something that is important happening is to be able to track something consistently over a long period of time. And so that, you know, as you saw from the, from the situation and, and Kinesis and, you know, from the Secidis, you know, there's a trend there. Is it good or bad? You know, it seem, seemingly is good, but the thing is, is that if, if you don't see a trend, you don't go and try to look and explain it. And, you know, that's what's I think really important about these programs is to be able to have consistent data over that. What now over thirty years? That is, that is important. And here in Halliburton County, where our livelihood really depends on these lakes. You know, this is, this is an important program for us.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you. Years ago in, a, a number of years ago, when I was on council early in my time, we had, I started was doing a lot of discussions on pesticides, the hydro one spraying and, and everything. And there was a company and opened up right on the main street of Halliburton at the time. And I remember one day after council meeting, I went, spent about half an hour, forty-five minutes and just talked to the, the people who own the company and they were very informative about what, what was, what was bad. But I asked them at the end, I said, what are three things that can really harm our lakes? And they said, well, the septic inspection program is really going to help and that's definitely a, a big factor. And they said, and, and this doesn't happen as often either. Today is pouring gasoline in the lakes. You know, we all, we're all guilty of that back at the time, but you know, waves come in. But I think we're all very conscientious of that and the equipment that we can get to put our gas in our boats today. The third one was, which I don't think we talk enough about today, is the, and I'm not trying to condemn these people, but I think they should stop. Is the, and there's not a lot of them. I know in our two lakes that I'm involved in where I live. There's not a lot of people doing it, but there are a few fertilizing laws. They said it was really, really bad. And I, I don't think that's something that we emphasize enough. I know I try and I try to tell all our councillors and when we go into council association meetings, make sure that you, you emphasize to the, you know, the audience, the, the few people that are in the audience, that they must stop fertilizing their loans. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Not. Thank you very much. Thank you. Pleasure.
That the presentation by Andrew Gordon and Jim Prince from Ulinks updating this, accounts on the status of the water quality testing program for Halliburton County, if you received this information.
If someone move, councillor Danison, second by councillor Carter. All, all in favor? It's carried. Consent agenda?
Yeah, that the consent agenda for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five be approved as, as presented.
Someone move? Councillor Dayo, second by councillor McCackney. All in favor? It's carried. Officer CEO, Chief Administration Officer, Service Delivery Review.
Thank you, Warden Burton. And let's present to council now, we've had the opportunity to revisit the, the service delivery view that was started a number of years ago for the county and present some options for going forward. I think it's important as we get going is to just provide a little background as to where, where it started and where we're at. And, and cut some come up, some kind of modifications, think we can make to the process to, to help us move along. Phase one of the program started in twenty, in, in twenty twenty-one, when it was presented to council in twenty twenty-two, where out of a review of sixty-six different service levels, and I believe it was almost over two hundred different service subsections of those sixty-six service levels. The report identified twelve high pri- high priority areas for review at that time. And they include fire services, legal services, solid waste management, human resources, building and bylaw, economic development, communications, planning, roads and bridges, procurement, IT digital strategy and intergovernmental relations, which is a lot. And we're talking about the volume of that in a second. As part of the implementation piece of it, the review was actually tasked to staff teams that were comprised of staff members from all five of the municipalities and a great deal of work was undertaken to bring the, the information forward. And these teams reported to the project steering committee, which comprised of members of county council of the day. And the steering committee, the recommended the implement, of the twelve reports they received, the steering committee recommended implementation of six of the priority, priority areas between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And the ones identified for moving forward were solid waste management, fire services, economic development, bylaw enforcement, procurement and the IT digital strategy. Of note of those six, as part of the follow-up, Dylan Consulting was contracted to do a review of the solid waste management program. That report came back to count, to this council in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, excuse me, early twenty-four. Wherein they recommended a shift to a, to a single delivery model, which, which the administration of solid waste management arrests with the county. That recommendation was not approved as going forward. So status quo remains in that. And so that was as far as the implementation piece of, of the service of, on solid waste management went. Not, not disassociation with the fact of the amount of work that went into it, but it wasn't the ultimate recommendation of that group wasn't, wasn't approved by council. In preparing for today and going forward, we reviewed the delivery of the services over the past two years, the ones that were actually implemented. And, and it's overall, on a, on a overall basis, the ones that were implemented successfully. And that resulted in increased productivity and service delivery efficiencies across the, across the thing. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through and, and go through each of them, but they're detailed within the report. And if there is any specific questions, we can go back and go through as part of the question part of it. As, as part of our, what we're trying to build here with respect of a continuous improvement program on the services we deliver. We've also done out hit some areas we can go through and the ones, yes, they were successfully implemented, but like any other new program you put in place, there are definitely areas where we can improve upon or make some changes that will ma- make it even better. And we're going to talk about, I will talk about some of those now. As noted in the report, a lot of the challenges that were faced with the implementation, I believe can be attributed by there was never any, there was never any clearly articulated service agreement between the county and the township of the services delivered. And when it first went through, that was fine, but as you go through time and people change and memories fade with respect to the intent behind certain things were being put in place, there be, started to give some ambiguity and, and misremembering, understanding as to who does what. And that's fair. And that's not a criticism of anybody. It's just nature of way things go when you go over that like period of time. And so it also didn't clearly identify roles and responsibilities. And, and so I think it's important to, to identify these areas of concern. And, and I think it's also important, they're not significant concerns, but just enough that there's some, some conflict or friction between the county and the, and the local municipalities and some of the deliver, service delivery pieces of things. And one of the areas we're looking at doing going into this, into this year is working with the local municipalities and county staff to develop detailed service agreements for each of the service areas where we're providing a service to the, to the lower tier, just so that everybody understands who, what the role is, whose lane is, is what lane. And then we can identify how we deal with it if there's a conflict going forward. And, and also, and so those drafts will come back to, it will come back to this council for review. And then we'll, we'll go back and present them to the lower tiers as well. And one of the areas, and this is just for purposes of discussion today, and as we move into the next level of it, is, is also the opportunity for when you, some of the core areas of service are clearly identified, but there's some that kind of straddle the bounds of, is it part of the core service or not? That there's an opportunity that we can institute like a fee for service piece over, above and beyond the service agreements that we'd like to look at that as going forward as well. Because that's getting areas are specific to one municipality versus the broader construct of the county. And I think it's from a fairness standpoint, if, if that's being asked, there should be, some of that should be attributed back to the principal municipality itself. The other part of, as I mentioned before, the transparency and clarity part of the, the, the service level agreements. But the other part I think is, is actually more important from the standpoint, it's the accountability and evaluation, effective evaluation of what we're doing. Because once you start codifying and quantifying the elements we're providing, now we can start doing things like generate KPIs around what we're providing. And so when I'm reporting back to council and, and, and your staff at the local level, reporting back to you as, as local councils, you actually now have a verifiable data matrix you can use to show success, failure, indifference on what's going forward. And that's one of the benefits coming out because we clearly identify what the responsibility is. Then we can develop a KPI in it, KPI on it, and then properly report to everybody as to efficiencies, value, value for money type thing going forward. So I think that's kind of the, the another piece going forward, which again leads to improved service quality on, on multiple levels. Because you look at it, we're talking with individual services, but we're still trying to look at it as the basket of services we provide. And so if we can, it one allows us to create efficiency here and shift resources to support one that may be underperforming. We have a better lens to look at that through going forward. So I think that's a, a, kind of the offshoot benefit of the, of the, of the service agreements as well. So that's kind of where we're at when with the phase one piece is just the review part, I think. Then we'll have a more detailed report back to council, how the service agreements will address the piece going forward. On phase two, looking at and using the vast amounts of information created the first time that results in the twelve high, twelve distinct high priority areas, is looking, hey, what's logically the next step going forward? And one thing I, I would say from the first iteration of it, and this, again, this isn't just a criticism, but it's a critique. In a sense, it was a lot and it was almost too much. There was twelve significant tasks that were assigned to staff. And there was a minimal implementation plan. And so it was like, you have all this work to do and it's go forward and there wasn't a plan as to how you get to the end, other than just taking the steering committee and then go forward. And so we're going to, I think it's important that we take this big list and start pairing it down into manageable chunks. And we're only bringing forward a recommendation on four distinct areas to look at, at variant levels of detail as we go forward, I think will allow us to go that. And if you look at it from the service delivery view is more of an iterative process where it just never stops, right? As you go forward, you're looking at distinctly here, then we'll come back at a different time and look at another tranche of services as needed. But all at the same time, circling back to the reviews we've done. So you're doing the continuous review on the stuff you're doing to ensure that, that, that consistency and efficiency moves forward at all times. So it's not lost. It's just isn't done, done and dusted and move on. So it's, it's important going forward. And also it's just because of the way we're implementing it, ways implemented last time is that it allows a much better opportunity for the management of staff resources. Because the staff being brought in to conduct these reviews or support these reviews still have their regular job to perform for either the county, the local municipalities. And by limiting the, the draw on those resources, it doesn't negatively impact or create workload issues at either the county level or at the local level as well. The, moving forward and, and this report specifically didn't talk to what this, the, that review process looks like, because that's kind of the next step going forward with, with endorsement of, of council. We will then, myself will sit down with the, the local CEOs and, and, and staff members and develop what that program looks like. This is what we're going to do. Here the timelines for it, here's, here's the intended outcomes going forward. And we'll try to build as much of the program going forward on that. And the, excuse me, yeah. So also the, the last part is the program is important as the program, like I say, set timelines, what services we're looking at and how we're going to do it. But more importantly, as I mentioned before, is it will include a detailed implementation plan that shows, okay, this is the timing for it. This is how it will be implemented. This is how it'll be rolled out going forward. But more importantly, there will also be an element included in and on the change management aspect of it too. And which is another part that was missing from the first go around. And it's one thing to put a plan in place, say we're going to do X. But if you don't properly plan out how it is going to infect it, this, these things ultimately impact people. And where they work, how they work, what their roles and responsibilities are. If you haven't properly planned out how that impact is on, at the personal level, you'll have some implementation issues going forward and it'll affect the quality of program. So that we'll definitely introduce some change management, people management, the components into the plan, recognizing the impact these types of things have on staff. Even to, even it's simply a matter of amount of the workload they'll have and the learning curve coming out of it. I think it's important, but forward. Three minutes, like I lost a page in my notes. So in phase two, what we're looking at, at bringing forward, and this is subject to obviously council's comments and, and intuitions that they think we should go to another place. Looking at engineering, and then this was, is kind of a twofold piece. It was originally looked at under the first go around, under the title Roads and Bridges. And I've actually put it, we've actually put it on engineering, because I think it's a little broader construct than just the roads and bridges part of it. And this is an important one because this one has some interesting context on money and, and how, and that not, and how much and how we spend our money. And just a, a very high level of review and the, in the amounts of engineering fee, consultancy fees paid by the local municipalities over the past two years just pertaining to roads and bridges, it's eight hundred thousand dollars. So roughly about four hundred thousand dollars a year. And you start looking at what then, and that, that doesn't include the, the large scale mandatory legislative bridge assessments that are done that you have to send out. So that piece was excised out of that number. And then, because that's a even bigger number, right? And you start looking at it from a value from dollar standpoint is, well, we can actually invest in ourselves and, 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 and increase the skillset and knowledge within the organization at the county level to provide that service to, that to the, to the local municipalities, through, through the just rebuilding of the engineering department. And it goes beyond just the, the bridges component too, because a lot of things that will come in place that I think was, is a lot of return on, on value investment for us is that we can now provide engineering technical support to the townships on things like quantitative calculations for road construction. The, the granular pieces they buy, the, the quantities they buy for winter maintenance and that can now be done through people that that's what they do. That is their job. And so I think you'll see efficiencies in how the product is ordered, small design work with respect to ditches, shoulders, small coverets and that can be done in-house. And for less than we're currently paying. That's the supposition that would be borne out by further study going forward. And the other part of it is with the added importance and requirements of the asset management plans at all levels, both the county and the local municipality level. We will now have a program put in place whereby we can provide assistance to the local municipalities as they administer their asset management plans by having expertise that's affordable on, between five municipalities, much more than each municipality, trying to find experts to deal with the asset management plan. So it's just, when we start getting away from just the bridge pieces where it started, it started to show how reinvestment here could actually have a broader import, import for us. And it's really important because with the province and the way they're designing their fundings around. And it's really important because with the province and the way they're designing their fundings around them, funding around infrastructure now. Is the reliance on the asset management plans is huge, as in if you're not current and you're not meeting their standards on the on the asset management plan. You will be ineligible for money. So there there's an added value to that as well, so we're, that's a very important one for us. Um, communications again, and I think that bore itself out during the during the the uh, the the ice storm emergency event. Where we're actually, we were able to pull together a core. Uh, communications team that represented both county and local, and the value and the strengths we got out of that communications. Was was significant and and served us very well in that very small area, but I think if you broaden that out to everything we do. Between the the five organizations, there is significant value to looking at having some coordinated. Corporate communications on a on a on a on a larger scale. Um, and interestingly enough, this was one, if you go back in the original review done, that was the recommendation of the working group at that time. And then it got dropped and and I couldn't figure out why it got dropped, because the information wasn't there, but it was, that was, so it's a consistent recommendation. Since the start of this program was that that we do look at centralized uh, corporate communications for all five entities. Um, human, human resources in including a concept of consolidation, or at least administrative consolidation of benefits. Um, this is an, again, it's a, it's adding. More power to the entity is where it's an, it's can be relatively expensive thing to. Implant in in all five municipalities, but if we share in it and we can start to get some strength and quality of labor negotiations. Uh, just standard H R pieces, training, aspects, um, benefit management, things of that nature. Um, by looking at, is there a way we can. Pool resources um, and create a stronger product at the end, because. It it is from the H R perspective, it, yes, it is, you are spending money to do it, but it's also, if not done properly, can cost you money. As well, so I think it's worth mining down a little further on on the aspects of of the human resources. And again, that was an area that was considered and. Recommended for support uh, in phase one, but again, didn't go, didn't uh, follow through with the committee again. Uh, with not a lot of detail, but that was the uh, consistency and recommendation from there. And the last area we're looking at. Is on the planning field, but not so much the administration of the planning, but looking at the benefits of. Doing a consolidated official plan for the entire county, where there'd be one official plan for the entire county. And then the local planning documents, which would be subsidiaries to those. Um, it allows for consistency and and broader policy application going forward. Um, and it's a, it's a great efficiency tool and it's adds an element of clarity to. Anybody working within our respective municipalities on the development side of things as well. And I think that aspect of the consultant official plan has actually come up in conversation at the local level before or recently. Um, and we'd like just like to pursue going forward with that, um, uh, from the planning side, so that's where we're looking at going. Um, and. The goal, as as I mentioned before, is is when this is done. To two levels, when this is done endorsed by, if endorsed here at county council, um, I will. Go meet each one of the local councils and explain the process or or what the thoughts are on phase two of the program directly. Um, to each one of the the committee members, excuse me, council, excuse me. Um, and then as we go forward, the the same would happen with the service agreements, where when we go forward. We have the conversation at the staff level, land on something we think is 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 doable and then um, present them here. Uh, for endorsement from county council, and then again, I would. Present them as well to the local municipalities for for their endorsement going forward. In person, I think it's better that way, we have full interaction between support myself and 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 the local C O. And again, the same, the same process would apply as we got into the receipt of the final reports on the areas of of review.
Questions. Counselor Danson.
Thank you. I I'd have to agree that one of the things I think that one of the greatest challenges we ran into right off the top was that there was so much. Uh, so many recommendations and so much work to do that I think it was overwhelming. It's like, how do you serve up an elephant and? And it just became too great a task, and there there has been a lot of fabulous work done. Uh, by the working groups, but it it it's still been too many, too much. Uh, goals trying to achieve. Um, I I, the one question about working on um, service. Agreements between the municipality and the county and municipalities in the county. I'm assuming you would work with the C O's when you're doing the drafts of those. Or or would you be considering doing up drafts and presenting them to?
I I think from the standpoint, because on the, this is only, this only applies to the service level agreements. Because we're the service provider, we would draft the service agreement and then and then consult based on the initial draft. And that that's only for the the service level agreement piece. Uh, because I have a significant amount of information and feedback from the local municipalities now on the services provided. So it would be building on that information and then having a give it, so that's just, so you're not starting from a like a blank slate conversation. Here's what we heard, here's how we think we can address it, and then work off that draft document to come to the final one with significant input from both sides.
Uh, I'm really glad to hear, you know, that that we we do need to establish some working agreements, because I I think that that's what's. What's sort of led us to some failures in some areas. Um, you know, I know in in the area of procurement, we're doing really well with procurement, but. A few things, you know, as far as information and understanding, so it's kind of fallen off the rails a little bit, and I, you know, clear understanding and agreements would. Would really help with that. Um, I I do wonder on the H R piece, if there are any challenges associated with. Um, A, Algonquin Highlands not having a union and B, with there being different union agreements. Uh, among the the other municipalities, whether that creates challenges or whether that's something you see as local.
No, I I don't see the challenge at all. I think, you know, the to the larger center, when I was in Cambridge, we had, we we worked with five different unions. Um, across the board with the same H R department, right? So it's, it's, the basic principles are the same, whether you're dealing non-union or union. Um, so I don't see that as a barrier. Actually, I I see it a bit of a bonus going forward, because it adds a different. Level of expertise into the conversation across the five municipalities versus one trying to do it all on their own. Particularly in areas like labor negotiations.
Um, I I also see the service agreements and the idea of of a single official plan with with subplans for the lower tiers. Being something that will really help the public to have a greater understanding of of the lies of, you know, what will. You know, what, how come I can't do the same thing that the guy at the end of the lake can do? You know, there's, I think there's a lot of of misunderstandings on the part of the public and that, you know, both agreements and and a single official plan will really. Help with respect to that, but. We really need to have buy-in here. Uh, from all of us, you know, to to in order to go forward, because we've talked about this an awful lot. And and we seem to keep kind of stumbling uh. In in really going ahead the way we should be.
Counselor Day.
Um, yeah, thanks. A lot of what I had in mind has been covered by counselor uh, Danielson. Uh, my my only question in addition to that regarding the the service uh, level agreements is. In my mind, I see it as sort of a chicken and egg scenario, where in order for this table to endorse. Engineering, for example, as a priority for phase two. I'd kind of like to know what would the practical implications be for Algonquin Highlands if we're gonna call it shared service. Rather than, you know, a county initiative, so like, wh-what is the phasing of. Making sure those service agreements really work for the lower tiers before we say, okay, we're go at county level.
Uh, if if right, so two different, there's two elements, I think, to your question, so if we look at the the my commentary on the service level agreements now. What, and to the counsel Danis's question, I'm dealing specifically with the services were already that were the ones that came out of the phase one. So those agreements will deal with the knowns of the service. That came out the, as defined by the original thing, the how it's being implemented over the past uh, two years. And the areas of improvement that have been identified on both sides, so that's. Part is the known, on the phase two part, you won't know that part until we go through the next study, the next look, right? The construct around using engineer, for example, it potentially has the benefit to do A. Create efficiencies with respect to the our obligations for. Brit, our bridge, bridge and large culvert inspection, our quantity calculations for road maintenance. Uh, small design pieces as well and potentially into the area of support. It would augment, obviously, our uh, asset management programming, but also the 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 operating provides support. Specific subject matter extra for support on asset management for the local municipalities, that's the supposition going into the next phase. If, as we go forward and mine down into what that actually looks like. Are the savings we think are there really there, right? Um, do we, do, would it be enough capacity in whatever the new thing element looked like to perform what? We're talking about, and then to your point. What is the benefit in both sides with respect to the county, the the increase in service level for the the local municipalities? And then the next level becomes what would that service level agreement look like, so it's, it's part of the review. And so we have two levels of it going, yes, to your point, there would be a service agreement on that, but we, I couldn't tell you what it would look like now in any specificity. Until we actually did the review and came back and had the broader discussion. Initially at the with, at the staff level, with the with the with the local staff and and the county staff. And then at the political level with, here's what we found and here's how we think we can go forward with it.
Listen, uh, Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know. What you said at the beginning about the number of projects and so on was, you know, it was somewhat overwhelming when that report. Uh, first came out, um, and I think it was also very difficult in the way it may have. Um, proceeded in that. You know, you were, you were turning over to a group of people. A uh, a task in which their jobs were being potentially redefined or threatened. And, uh, you know, always uh, always a bit difficult to work um, in 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 that way. Um, and you know, perhaps in some cases, not necessarily what we're talking about today. We almost need an outside person to lead the task force, not talking about a consultant or anything, but. A C O or, you know, maybe Dev can be looking at the, you know, how the planning group works, you know, just. Having an outside uh, kind of chair to keep things, uh, you know, I I know he's always looking for. Interesting tasks, so, um, but just having somebody uh, maybe a bit more neutral, I. I think that, you know, working on a limited number is the way we have to proceed. Um, I can see this situation, you know, when we talk engineering. And we talk about bridges and culverts and so on, we probably have. I don't know what the number is, seventy to a hundred million dollars worth of buildings. Okay, that that are constantly needing to be repaired, revamped. Whatever, and there's a lot of engineering work that goes with that also. So the, you know, the 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 concept of having some things that are 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 centralized or. And I use, the thing I liked the most in last year's budget is that we went out and hired. An extra mechanic so that we could do more of our work inside, which ended up being a big money saver. So sometimes you have to make an investment to to uh, save money, and then. I, you know, the the work that we have to do, I I think it's really important to get the buy-in. That it not be looked upon as a senior and junior, I know we call it upper tier and lower tier, but. If there's a senior and junior aspect to it, it's going to make it more difficult to implement, so we have to find. A way that the five groups are working together and working together with, you know, in some egalitarian manner.
Yeah, I, with with to your last point, Counselor, I agree, and I think that's the reason why I think. The the service love agreements are the are the key element going forward, it's it's the prenup, if you will. Like, let's make, let's understand everything while we still like each other and and go forward and. And it's so, if you have a question, let's build it into the document. If you want to talk about conflict resolution, let's build conflict resolution pieces in into the document. You want and and scope of service, let's build scope of service into the group, so you don't get, to your point, creep. Where we started doing this, then now all of a sudden we're doing this and people don't understand how we got there. So those are all the things I think that once we, that's the ultimate implementation tool we're gonna have, are are those agreements.
Counselor Ralph.
Yeah, I I really like your approach uh, on what you're doing, uh, you know, too many, too many. If you bite an elephant. You take too big a mouthful, you're gonna end up choking on something. So you gotta do it in in the right order. Um, but my background is is process engineering and logistics, so. Usually when you do this, you got three, three different levels, one, you got the development, you got the implementation, and you got the continuous improvement, that's kind of sort of the way it all works. Um, the problem with it is, is when does development start and implementation start? And so at the end of the day, you can overdevelop it to the point where nothing gets done. There's no starting point, because you can never figure out what it is you're trying to do in the first place. Whereas if you, if you look at it and say, okay. If we as a group decide that we're gonna pick any one of the items, it doesn't matter what it is, I'm not talking about any individual item, I'm talking about the overall process. And say, okay, if if we're gonna use waste management or we're gonna use whatever it is we're gonna be using. Um, at what point in time can we agree that these are the core things that need to be dealt with? Then and there, I think that's the way we need to deal to that point. Is it perfect? No, because there's lots of other stuff that could be included as time progresses. Makes sense to make that more of a continuous improvement aspect of it than an actual initial development of it. The contracts and everything would be under the implementation piece, but at the end of the day, a contract. Can can be overkilled. Before it even gets off the ground, if we get too detailed in how we put our 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 agreements together. So the the word draft or preliminary or whatever, whatever the right word is, or we can change it. Has to be brought into the equation, because otherwise, what's gonna happen is we're gonna end up not being able to agree on anything. And accomplish virtually nothing. So far, you've avoided that, and I I commend you on that, because I think that is the way we need to do it. But what I want to see is, I want to see going down the road, that at some time we consider, honestly, we got six projects, five projects, doesn't matter which one. And say, okay, this one has now reached the point where development is completed, and now we can go into implementation. Because we're only working on four, whatever the number is, we now have the opportunity to bring a new one in. Or we can choose not to. Just just my input for what it's worth.
You, your, your points are well taken, Counselor, just, and so that's the intent of of kind of the next step of what we're talking about today. Is and and building on some of the calmness from Counselor Carter, that's what we came together with for. This is, we've looked at it and we think, oh, these are the ones that. We have the, we have the resources to manually work with today, and and from the benefits drawn out of those. Will allow us to go to the next step, okay, what are the next ones we we need to look at going forward? And that those inputs compare, they can be recommendations, the township say we want to come forward with different things or us uh, going forward, but also. In putting these programs together, there will be definite timeframes with respect to the 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 study versus the implementation side of things. Is so our goal now is to, with just off top, man, is I'd like to have something back to the council, like in September. Right, here's where we're at, here's where we think, and then that's, and and look for the final sign-off on these four things, now some of them. Would be longer than that, I'd take the example of the official plan, if that's decided what we're doing, like the 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 consultant official plan. Well, obviously, it has a much longer lifespan than than some of the other reviews have, uh, because the reason for that timing is if if we can come back and. Address councils, plural, um, in the fall, we're within budget cycle for twenty twenty-six. Right, and that's the goal, these is be, stay within budget cycle for twenty twenty-six.
Counselor Danielson.
To your point about uh. To your point about uh, upper and lower tier. One of the things that I've always tried to encourage is that we call ourselves our member municipalities as opposed to lower tiers. And so that that sort of points to us all being partners. When we talk about member municipalities, we're all part of the same group, we've all got the same goal. Um, with respect to jobs, you know, I find it unfortunate that during. All of the discussions that we've had, there has been, and obviously, some fear on the part of the people that have been working on. On working in the working groups that were working on, you know. Losing our jobs, which has not ever been the suggestion, we've always talked about. If there's any jobs that are that are left behind, it's through attrition when somebody's retiring. Not, we're just not thinking about getting rid of people, and 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 I did like. The the comments or the, some of the the points that you made in your report about when somebody is leaving. That we really take a look at it as a, as a, as a group, as five people who, or five municipalities. To look at, is there an opportunity for efficiencies here? Um, so I I really like that, and I think that that gives some sense of security to staff that they're not. We find some efficiencies, it doesn't mean that somebody's gonna lose their job. Just one more point, on the, on the issue of neutrality. I don't think you can point at Scott and say that he's the most neutral person in the room, I mean, if if any. We're all evolved, we're all involved, every one of us in the room, you know, and and I personally, I think that Gary's the best person to lead this.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'm glad you finally saw me, I thought I was a little boy in grade two with my hands.
I'm glad you finally saw me. I thought I was a little boy in grade two with my hands up and the teacher couldn't see me. But anyway, uh, first thing I have to say, Liz bought up procurement. I don't know one reason in the world that we wouldn't all have the same procurement bylaw. Does anybody think of one? Can you hear me?
They're thinking.
Like, why would we have five procurement bylaws? They all should be the same.
Okay, go ahead.
At the risk of being the one that jumps in, um, I I agree with the counselor. And and one of the aspects we're looking at as we move forward on the procurement, um, service level agreement, that's what we're we're going to be talking about is the benefits of single, single procurement by law, a single level of procurement policies. Because as soon as you get into that, it allows us to do more for, um, as it stands now. But we're also looking at developing, showing the different municipalities. If because we're also trying to maintain autonomy at the same time as 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 efficiencies. If you choose not to, here's how the service will be different for you. Like, if if everybody has the same policies and we're doing the true centralized procurement, this is the basket of goods you get. If you're maintaining a certain level of autonomy in a certain area procurement, well, this is the basket of goods you get. So that's what we're building on now, but the ultimate goal would be to go to a single process, single, single policy across all five municipalities. Municipalities still hold their authority on the approval part of it, but it's a consistent in consistent application of the of the policies.
Okay, next point. The, um, the the service delivery review, when I first heard about it, uh, the whole process was to make government more efficient and to save money. And now every time I I hear this, uh, it's 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 going to increase the service level. So how's it going to save money? I mean, I I agree with Liz, nobody wants to lose their job, but people, there's a lot of people in the public sector leaving to go other places. And and you need to look around and say, how do I fill that job? Do I really need to replace that person? Or can I find an alternative? Well, if we don't all do that together, I don't think we're going to get where we want to go here. And I get and then the other question I have for you is the engineers. Like, how far are they going to take the bridges and stuff? Can can they design the the bridges?
So I think I got about three different parts, a couple of parts to your question. Uh, I'm going to jump back to the the start of it is with, uh, I just lost my train of thought now. Bridge, I'll start there, I remember that one. Uh, on the so it depends. So what the thought is, with respect, if we bring a structural engineer along with the technical support that comes with it. There are smaller jobs that, yes, we can, there's smaller engineering jobs that we can do design work in house. Some of the if we're getting into large, you know, large complicated bridge construction, yes, that would be contracted out. But having said that, now we have contract management, uh, expertise in house. We have all this, all this, the support mechanisms that you're not having to buy or add on to your your tender to pay for it, to make sure that the work's being done properly. With respect to, um, staffing itself, yeah, um, sorry, that's what I was going for. If I'm going to go back to the start about the intent of the service review. Um, and people talk about it's it's service reviews when done, um, effectively. Saving money is a benefit to the service review because the core element is is the service you is identifying what services you need that you need to provide to support the desires of your community and then do them well. And if you do that part of it, you do generally end up with a cost savings that goes with the productivity side of things. But more importantly, I look at it, uh, where instead of cost savings as they're actually removing money for the budget. But if you build a more resiliency with inside your organization, it's actually, you don't have to find new money. You're actually, you you can create a way where you have existing money that you can reallocate or reprioritize into a different service because of the way you've realigned it. So it's yes, you're saving money, but it's it's use it with more of using existing money you have is is versus actually saying I'm going to pull X number of dollars out of the budget. Sometimes that does happen, um, and and sometimes it doesn't. And with respect to the staffing piece, and and that's what I went back at the start is that it's really important that you recognize the impacts of these things you do. And if you look at the things we're doing, um, or pressing at this time. Yes, there there will always be impacts, but it's not the impact of it's not a binary impact as you're here, you're not here. It's we're doing something different, so you may be doing something different, but you're still doing something, right? And that's the intent behind where we're at. So and that's why the 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 change management, the employee, the employee management part of it is really key to how this this piece rolls out. And with respect to the development of that program itself, and I'm not trying to presuppose my conversations with with my colleagues at the local level, is that I agree with Councilor Carter in the senses. We put staff, we generally, um, unintentionally put them in an untenable position in certain points where they are making, having to make judgments, if not on themselves, their colleagues with respect to what happens, right? So we're going to try to remove that from the process, I think that was unfair. Um, and it led to some things, some timing and and things going forward. But I think we can achieve all that going and going forward and and limiting how the still get the same level of review, but just do it in a much more concise, in in a concise manner. And this, the last piece going back to the staffing again, I think it's important that and it's why I specifically put it in there is that under the mechanism we're looking at now, you, we will be creating a venue by which you have the ability to do a systemic annual review on your product, right? If you start looking at this beyond just being a service organization, we are, we we produce a product. We are a service organization, we need to look at our deliverables, who our clients are, what the our clients' needs are and how we're achieving the needs of those clients going forward. And the list of clients goes is endless between staff as a client of this council. Our staff is a client of local councils, our staff is a client of of local staff. And look at them that way and find out the needs of everybody and build it in. And it starts working to your advantage on your on your your evaluations or your view actually moving forward. And the piece around the continuous improvement part is key. Now, we don't have a formal continuous improvement program here. But the beauty of a good continuous improvement program is it's a common sense program, right? But what it allows to do is have those conversations around where to to Counselor Fury's point and and others is that as soon as a position becomes vacant, you need to assess the that position itself. A lot of times, the mandatory positions are things that, yes, it's a very clear cut answer, yes, we need to fill immediately. But if it's one that there's a question, well, let's dive down deeper in it. And if we retain that F T E and the value of the F T E until we do a full analysis, then you can start looking at reprioritizing that money and goes back to my point about you save money in the sense that you're able to take that money, reinvest it someplace else, it gives you greater value on your deliverables. So I think that's the benefit of way we're trying to put it forward. And if that's the, um, central tenant of what we're doing across the board, then that would be done at all five levels.
That's a good, good point.
Just the one comment about the the H R, you know, so much of H R is process. And, you know, if you think of, you know, the the whole thing of recruiting, uh, the onboarding, the payroll process, the tracking vacations and tracking, you know, hours and all sorts of things like that. Yeah, there's probably a lot of things that are maybe more specific to each each area at the certainly at the beginning where because we have, you know, we have, we have different ways of doing things. But, you know, I think if you just started with some of those processes like payroll and and so on, uh, that's a job. You know, and that's something that could benefit, uh, everybody. And it's, you know, I think extremely, it would be extremely important. So I think it's, there's, there's a lot to be done. It may take a couple of years to get it all done, but there's a whole bunch at the beginning that you can you can work on.
Councilor Danielson?
When it came to procurement, one of the things that I found was that it just seemed like, I mean, we've been doing a great job and there's been great partnerships, there's been money saved, there's absolutely no doubt about it. But I felt like we lost some of the transparency between the county and the lower, the member municipalities. That we used to get information that we do not get now. And and I I don't have never been able to really get to the bottom of that. But I would like to see that if if we work on working agreements between the county and the member municipalities, that that there's open transparency, that we get the information that we need and and are looking for.
If I can add to that, and and thanks for bringing him up because it's a piece I left out of my note, I I didn't save for my notes is in addition to like the service level agreements and others that we're talking about, there's a both an internal and external education piece that goes with this. To your point, so I think some of the the sense of loss of transparency or loss of accountability, I'll use procurement as an example, you brought it up, is actually, and please don't take this the wrong way, it's like you had a certain, what you thought was a certain level of transparency because the actual procurement policies weren't being followed. Like, you were getting information, information was being made public that legally should not have been made in public, right? I'm not specifically saying, I, I, that's generally what happens on procurement because it's such a technical piece that there are very strict rules on on what can should be shared and can be shared depending on documents. So but I mean, my point of bringing it up is to say that we need to do a better job on the education side of it. You can't just drop a policy on somebody's desk and say, here you go. It's like, here's not so much what it is, but why it's there, right? And what's what's your role within that? Why is 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 what's there? And and I'll and then and my initial example is going to use was the shoreline preservation bylaw. And it's a, it's a decent bylaw, it needs to be improved in certain areas, and we're going to, we're looking at that and conversations with the local municipalities. But the piece that was forgotten was there's no public guide. Like, there's no public guide that we send out that if you're a user of the bylaw that says from step one to step twenty seven, where you fit in that and what your responsibilities are. And if you disagree with it, where do you go? If like, if if you run into this, what do you do? How are complaints? That none of that's codified, right? And so that so that's the external education piece, and that's what will be built into the program as well. If we're going to, it's it's incumbent upon me and my colleagues that if we're going to introduce a new policy or a program into any of our organizations, we may be damn sure at the start that A internally, we understand what it is, and more importantly, we do a very good job in educating the 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 overseers of it, which which are you as this group plus collectively as the local municipalities. But also the public understands what it is, right? So that's kind of the other element too, that I forgot to mention is the education piece.
I think I'm beginning to actually understand, which is kind of a scary thought all by itself. I think what we're trying to argue out here, maybe discuss is the big difference between cost reduction and cost avoidance. There's a hell of a difference between the two. Because if you look at cost, uh, reduction, you get the idea you're going to be able to take it out of the budget, which we can't do because that would that would just not make any sense. What you can do is you can take those resources and dollars and reapply them to something else that needs it. So you're doing a cost avoidance, that is to say, that the overall is not going to come down, it's merely going to be reallocated to something else. And so when when you do that, then it creates an opportunity for us to really look into some of the things that we do and 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 really improve on what we're what we're capable of doing. Back to the idea of should we have five or can we have one? Uh, how does it all work? And if we don't use, uh, this particular allocation of money for this, then that's a good thing. But at the same time, we now have to take that resource and add it to something else. Net result for those of us who are interested in percentages, it doesn't increase the overall tax rate. Because what you're doing is you're allocating the original money into something new going forward. Having said that, if anybody thinks that because we're going to go through all this and in twenty twenty seven, we're going to have a reduction in our tax base by six to seven percent, uh, the world is not going to run in that that particular area. So I I think that that what we're doing right now is avoiding a downward cost that we can definitely not have to bear.
You just to add to that, you're correct, Counselor, in the sense that is looking at the standpoint of if we do our job properly, which I'm completely confident that we will, is you now, and and so as much as I say, it's all about budget time is take the focus off the percentage and look at the value proposition to what we're asking, right? And if we do our job properly, I can confidently stand before council and say that if we do X, this is the direct benefit to our collective communities. And now I'm going to tell you that I've created created the metrics within a year from then, I can show you how I did, right? And so that's what we're trying to build.
Other questions?
Okay, um, like, tell me quickly here, a Coles note version, what what are your, you're starting off with, you've got twelve there, you're you're going to start off, we're going to have have four. And tell me, like, you're going to be over, the county's going to be overseeing these these four areas, right?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, when you're talking pure centralization, I mean, that is a general norm, but that would be the actual, um, the form of the function would be determined as part of the view. So we'd come back and say, based on discussions, if we're going to do this, this is what it looks like, right? And so in theory, it could be different for all four of them, right? And and so that that's 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 the yet to be seen part.
So, um, I'm going to try to make this really short, but you'll you'll get my point. I'm not here to disrespect the county or the the county's process or the county, uh, staff. But, um, I I think it's it's fantastic. We talk about, um, you know, the five groups being together and being, uh, working together because we do work for the taxpayers. We don't, you know, it's not one, it it's basically five groups. And I know I work for DICEART right right now, and of course, I'm here representing the the county also, I understand that. But, um, like, like to me, this 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 road where the Gary, that you're, you know, maybe you're not, but I this is the picture I'm seeing, you're taking us down, is going to try to be eventually a one tier government. And, um, I I just know that, and my, this is my opinion, I'm I'm only speaking for Walt McKechnie, who's who, uh, there's six other people on our council. But I I don't, I don't believe in a one tier government, especially up here in the county of Halliburton. And we all have great municipalities that have all their their own little niches and traditions and like you brought, like, not that this is part of it, Liz, but we're we're different in so many ways, but we we we're there, we're the same in so many ways. You talked about the way you're, you don't have unions, well, DICEART does have unions. We we all should work together for sure, like, because we all rep with a bit, we got to get our head around this. We got to quit spending money. So that's my thing. Again, I'm speaking for Walt McKechnie, I'm not as the Deputy Mayor. And, um, I I just don't believe in a one tier government because I've been told by a lot of my friends who are a lot smarter than I am, they don't work. And like, to me, your staff is great, Gary, but so is our staff, so is like Liz's staff, Bob's staff, Dave's staff. And like, but I can see us all sharing in in, um, in in everything that we're going to do. You know, I mean, when you're going to build a bridge, Liz, we should be, our our Director of Public Work should be in involved with your guy in because we've got a bunch of bridges that we have to do. I I could go on and on, but my my point here is I I just, I I think we spend so much time on this right here that we're doing right now. We have five great groups here, been around a long time. Uh, and, uh, it's it's like we're trying to make a big change. I don't think it's broken. Maybe it needs to be fixed a bit, but, uh, I I I just communication, I've heard you say that word a couple of times today when you spoke, Liz. Definitely is something we should have, we should never have any animosity amongst ourselves in the municipalities. We should work together and communicate to try to help one another. But, um, this thing where there's just going to be this great big smart thing up here and and and, uh, it's going to make everything, you know, go go, uh, uh, all our problems in DICEART and in Gonkun Highlands are going to go away. I I I'm sorry, I I I just, I'm not, I'm not on this path myself.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor. I think the important thing to to clarify, and I apologized earlier, we're not looking at creating a single tier. That's not the intention. So what but what we're looking at, and a lot of it goes back to the exact points you're raising. This is not a criticism of staff, this is not a criticism of of current process going forward. But we we're facing a lot of dilemmas as in a municipal sector going forward. Because if you start looking at the burdens being placed on us going forward, they're all contributing to a a a competition for the existing dollars we have. And we have a very limited, we we have one limited resource where those dollars come from, right? Which is which is the regressive nature of a property tax. What we're trying to do is identify those areas where if we can go in and create an efficiency where it's we don't have to add anything else to it, right? Or we create it such that we spend less than we're currently spending on it, that allows the reprioritization of those funds into something else that's required, well, that's the goal, right? And absolutely, there's there's a great level of intermunicipal cooperation between the counties and the local municipalities now, and that's not being disputed. However, and there is a great willingness to to help and and share. But when you're But when you're separate like that, is that it's contingent upon the ability to help from somebody else, not a willingness, but an ability because of the workload they have going forward. Dealing with specifically on the engineering, when I talk about roads and bridges, this isn't about supplanting the Public Works Department of DICEART or Minden Hills or any other municipalities. It's about giving them a value-added service from us to them that allows them to invest their current level of resources into what they do, right? I'm talking about design work, I'm talking about the math, the, the aspect of calculating how much gravel you buy and how much salt you purchase in the winter time, where you have one person taking inputs from the local municipality. This is what we need to do, and it goes off to this area here, and they're running the numbers for you. And there, then you get, you get the value of combined purchasing, so your gravel's cheaper, your salt's cheaper, stuff like that. And the math is being done by somebody that's all they do, not somebody that's got four other things to do and they're trying to do that. So that's what we're talking, I'm not talking about taking over departments, and we're not talking about getting exactly what you're talking about. I lived through the amalgamation of ninety-eight as one of my thirty-five years of experience. Um, it was, it was a difficult time when you got into the amalgamations where you, you dropped, they cut fifty percent of municipalities of Ontario. That's not our intention and, and going in it, nor was it the intention of the first iteration of the Service Delivery Review. We're just trying to figure out how we keep ourselves tenable as municipalities going forward with the increase that external pressures on us for money and services. And I think areas like healthcare, I think areas of social services and housing at the local level, the policing costs that aren't going down. So let's try to find a way where we can constrict how we spend our money without adding new to it to allow the local municipalities to pay for the policing without going back to the tax base. And then us on the healthcare or social services side, where we're allowed to, we can hopefully put something in place, we can prioritize the money a little bit differently. But I agree a hundred percent, and this isn't about creating one big monolith that's gonna make everything perfect. It's about taking the, the strength of what we currently have now and making them better.
Counselor Dennis.
Well, I, I guess what I was going to say was wrapping up, you know, uh, Gary's, uh, two hundred words into, I think this is just a desire to work better together, period. It's not any, anybody trying to take over anybody else's power or control. It's just how do we work better together to save money, streamline things? Simple, no, no, no desire for the A-word.
Well, I'm one hundred percent agreeable to that, and that's what I was trying to say and what I, what I was saying there, that I think we all have a a great, um, council, each one of us and staff. And I, I know in DICEART, I have nothing but great things to say about all the departments, and I'm sure you do too, so. Um, I understand that, and I, I, I love the idea of working together and communicating. On a, on a day, a day-to-day basis, that's how things get done as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Murray?
Well, two things, I think, I think Gary, I think you put together some very good information here, and I like your process. I think it has to be totally transparent and, and work for everybody. One of the complications you're gonna have when you get to the lower tiers. For instance, I just look at, at, uh, human resources. And this is going to require a lot of work on both sides. Like, we've got a human resource person that does the payroll, so you take the human resources away from her. And, you know, those are the kinds of things that we all gotta work together on and solve that. It, it's, it's a fairly complicated process, but we'll do it.
Okay, any questions? Resolution?
Um, that staff report, CO zero four, twenty twenty five, face two, County of Halliburton, Service Delivery Review be approved.
If someone move, Counselor Carter, second bay, Counselor Shetland. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Want to take a break? Sure, we're gonna take a short break.
Good, thank you. Community Safety and Wellbeing, Community Safety and Wellbeing, May 2025 Status Update, Sue.
Good morning, Warden Burton and Members of Council. First of all, thanking you very much for your participation in Red Shirt Day today, and to the staff members who helped make this happen. This day was established by Easter Seals Canada in 2019, and is about making a commitment to remove physical, attitudinal, and systemic barriers to accessibility and inclusion in our schools, workplaces, and community. Before you is a bi-monthly Community Safety and Wellbeing status report for May 2025. This report was delayed from April due to the state of emergency operations, in which my role shifted to Emergency Information Officer. Community Safety and Wellbeing work did continue through the state of emergency. A few report highlights include: Halliburton County's Community Mobile Outreach Program saw more than sixty visits in the first few months of the year. As you know, this outreach involves groups that include the City of Coortha Lakes Housing and Homelessness Outreach Team, John Howard Society, Durham Community Health Centre, PARN, and the Halliburton County Community Paramedics. And all are welcome to stop by for coffee and snacks, information to connect with services, and to access some health services on site. Outreach offers an opportunity for residents to meet with local service providers in one place, without having to go far to access support, and also allows for some networking between service providers that is helpful in the work they do outside of outreach services. With warmer weather, we are moving services outside again, where possible, to make outreach most accessible, including at the Minden Courthouse, which is a very busy spot for outreach. The Second ID and Emergency Support Clinic was held on April 17th at the Halliburton Legion. This event brought together Service Canada, Service Ontario, and about eighteen local service providers for a one-stop shop. Through this collaborative clinic, residents could come in to apply or reapply for essential documents, including health cards, social insurance numbers, birth certificates, and photo ID cards. This is particularly helpful for folks who experience barriers in accessing ID. So instead of the frustrating experience of having to call one service and then be redirected to another service or phone number to apply for additional paperwork, the services were in one place to work together to help. While participants were waiting for services or for their appointment for income tax filing, they were able to walk around the room and learn about youth services, resources available through the Halliburton County Public Library, food banks, and the Good Food Box program, support for heating, support for people with disabilities, and health services, including those offered by the Halliburton County Paramedic Service. In November, at a similar clinic, there were twenty-five participants, and at this last event, there were more than seventy-five participants. Sharing thanks to the Halliburton Legion for the space, the Central Food Network for sharing their income tax day with us, and Triple HS for offering transportation for people to and from the clinic. The Third Annual First Responders' Day was held on May 1st throughout the county, and despite rain, the community came out to celebrate our local police, fire, and paramedic teams. This is always a fun event, but also an event that provides essential information around emergency services and preventative actions the community can take to be safe and well. The state of emergency postponed meetings of the Halliburton Highlands Police Detachment Board, Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee, and Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, but all three groups were able to meet in May and are meeting again in a few weeks before taking a break for the summer. As noted, this week is National Accessibility Week, and Halliburton County's Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee is acknowledging this week to honor the valuable contributions of individuals living with disabilities and to highlight efforts aimed at identifying, eliminating, and preventing obstacles to inclusion and accessibility throughout the country. In partnership with local municipalities, this week, the county is highlighting local accessibility features designed to make Halliburton County a barrier-free space on our social media channels. Thank you so much. If you have any questions?
Okay, questions? Say none, resolution?
The staff report CSWB 032025, Community Safety and Wellbeing, May 2025 Status Update be received.
So move, Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Dayu. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Corporate Services, Finance, Finance, 2025 Tariff of Fees Bylaw, Andrea.
Good morning, Warden and Council. Staff are bringing forward the tariff fees by law today for council's approval to include the addition of the short-term rental appeal fee of $250. This fee was brought to council for discussion and approval this past December, however, it had not yet been added to the bylaw.
Questions? Resolution?
That staff report COR 092025, the 2025 Tariff of Fees Bylaw be approved.
Counselor Danielson, second by Counselor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Financial report?
Overall, as of March 31st, the county had collected 25.75% of budgeted revenues, 28.49% of operating expenses had been incurred, and 1.28% of capital expenses incurred. I did provide explanation within my report for areas that may seem to be trending above the 25% Q1 expectation. Some examples of these would be the bi-annual payment schedules of our long-term debt, annual membership or subscription fees that are typically due in January, and that all annual physician incentives have been paid for the year, along with the CT scan payment to Triple HS. So I currently have no issues or concerns to bring to council's attention at this time.
Questions? Resolution?
That's that report number COR 102025, Q1 financial report, as of March 31st, 2025 be approved.
Move, Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shutt. All in favor? It's carried. Public Works, Transportation? So?
Good morning, Warden and Members of Council. My first report is in regards to the extension of an agreement with Superior Road Products for the execution of Road Preservation Project on the recommendation is to extend versus going out to tender. And the contractor has been performing well for the last few years, and so we're recommending moving forward with the extension. The extension is within our budget. And also the two sections of roads that we will be performing the applications on our County Road 1 and County Road 16, which were paved three years ago in 2022. And yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Carter?
Yeah, on the County Road 16, you go from Highway 35 to 800 meters east of Bat Lake Road. I mean, that seems like a bit arbitrary. Is that based on what budget you had?
Well, it's on a road. It's based on the roads. It's kind of a funny place to stop, but it's on a road section that was predefined a few years ago.
Okay.
And throughout the years, we just kept redoing the road sections. So it's, yeah, it's a little bit of a...
Okay. Mary?
So, I think in, that's about three years ago now, the county did a study for a development on Wallings Road. And it's, we never did get an answer what the county was satisfied with. And it's, we've got interest again there, so I would like you to have your engineers look at that or see what needs done and give back to me if you could.
Sure, yes, we can. So that was, that was brought forward in 2022 or 2023?
2022, I think.
2022. And it's for the original development on that property?
No, it's a lesser one now.
Okay.
But it's, the issue is still there around that, so that's the issue. But we have to, we have to do something there, and we need to figure out what it is that you guys want.
Okay. Yep, well, sure, we'll have a definitely a look at that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Resolut?
The staff report PWS 092025, approval to extend the County Asphalt Preservation Contract for 2025 be approved, and then a bylaw be presented authorizing the warden and the clerk to execute the agreement with Superior Roads Products Limited.
Okay, someone move, Counselor Perry, second by Counselor McCackney. All in favor? Carry it. Facilities Land Registry Office?
This report is a follow-up report to our February, I believe it's the February 12th meeting, council meeting, in regards to the land registry, LRO, and the administration, which is the admin building renovation project. Basically, the scope of work for both buildings is very similar in nature. It's to improve accessibility within compliance. And building structure, which is works, creates and workspaces upgrade, regulatory standards, so building code, fire code, mechanical and electrical system upgrades, which are AHVAC, electrical plumbing. Safety enhancement, our security systems, exits signs, AAB systems. The tentative schedule for the project from, is an RFP that would be posted on June 9th, closing July 8th, which would come to County Council for review and approval. And then if awarded, it would be July 23rd, which is the same day. The Phase Two, which would be the construction, would tentatively start on July 28th or shortly thereafter. Substantial completion would be late November, the end of November, November 28th, with final inspection and completion on December 15th or before Christmas break. Staff requested updated costs, estimates to obtain the most accurate and relevant cost, considering the original estimate was just over a year ago, and the evolving tariff and price uncertainties from suppliers for various components of materials. So the, have outlined the the, I guess, the increase in budget, which would, the total budget would be $2,440,000, $440,000, which would be an increase of $800,000 from the previous budget. And that, that's due to just inflation in costs, just the time elapsed before the, from the first original budget. The staff are recommending a breakdown of how this would be covered. The $421,000 would be funded through reserves, as previously noted in our original budget. There would be $386,000 from capital program savings from 2025, and there would be $1.63 million by debt. So the, due to the, to the, to the costs of the project, staff have developed basically three options to consider. Option A is proceed with all renovations in both buildings on, on the revised costs, including described improvements and financial considerations. Option B would be to do the necessary improvements to be co-compliant in the administration building, which is 11 Newcastle Street, this one, and defer all other renovations and works to 2026 for both buildings. Option C would be to perform the required compliance improvement at 11 Newcastle Street, which is the admin building, and basically dispose of 12 Newcastle Street as is without doing any further improvements. Now, stat, our Director of Corporate Services has also provided a little bit of an example of what a debenture for 2025 years would look like for, to compare the budgeted towards versus the new revised. So on a 25-year debenture would be 4.74%, which would be $141,000 total principal and interest payment for 2026 budget year. The principal-to-principle payment compared from the 1.6 to 8 million versus the 1.2, which was originally budgeted for, would be $17,146 difference. And, and also there's other examples of other years. But, so essentially, the difference between the 1.2 and the 1.6 would be $17,000, just a little over $17,000 a year increase for the debenture. Staff, staff are recommending, in order to secure actual costs and for consideration, to allow more informed consideration of the above options, staff do recommend moving forward with the tender, in the understanding that council has the authority to cancel the project as per our purchasing policy once the results are presented to council. With that?
Okay. Questions? Lisa?
Thank you. Can you tell me, Sil, so we've got, I'm not sure what the dimensions or the size of this room is, but comparing to, like, what is the difference between the square footage, say, of this room and just the square footage of the room that you would be using, or we would be using, pardon me, for the council meeting? I mean, after standing in there, I think I visualized it maybe because it's been so many years that it was larger, but I mean, everything's like shiny and new and sounds wonderful, but when I looked at the, the style of the desks that were put in there, I'm wondering if, if that was in here, this room probably would seem that much larger as well?
Well, the, the room across the road is about a third of this side more, and specifically in length, not necessarily in width. And the way that the seating and the desks have been designed is essentially to, for the space itself. So everything that has been laid out or designed is to accommodate the space provided. So yes, the horseshoe-like desk across the street that is proposed is a little bit more streamlined and smaller than the desk layout that you have now, but it's to accommodate the, to create a good space.
Just to add some context to Sil's comment, if you're looking visually, council, if you're looking at it, the what, the, the front part, when you walk in, that's the additional space you have. There's a little bit more in the actual functionality of the room, but it's the front part as well. And it, because if you look at it from how it's laid out, there's significantly more public space in that room than currently exists in this room.
Counselor Carter?
And not that I'm suggesting this at all, but I'm just trying to, to understand. So, you know, in your option C, you had the idea of disposing of the building across the way. What is the county process for doing that? Is it something where you would have to, you know, declare its surplus and then go out to get estimates and that type of thing? I just, just wanting to know.
The, the normal process for that is, A, has to be declared surplus, and then you would, you would go off either, you would have it properly appraised based on its current state as you sit right now, and then you'd, either you can go on for sale, or you can go tender, whichever council chooses going forward.
Mary?
Okay, what did it cost to remove the, the?
Okay, what did it cost to remove the, the asbestos?
The asbestos at the time was just under fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
For the asbestos. And we had the mole remediation, which was just under the, I believe, the forty, forty thousand. And then we have the new roof, which was around the sixty thousand dollars.
So we got a hundred and fifty, but that, that, you couldn't sell it with, with those issues, for sure. I guess, I, I'm going to go back to three meetings ago when Jennifer raised a question, and she said, she did, she thought there was a better way to spend a million dollars. Well, I got thinking about it, and I, I totally agree, like, for a building that's going to be used, what, ten to fifteen percent of the time? With, for council meetings, and no staff members over there other than those that go over? And for public participation, when Minden Hills has got ready for space, I, I just have to say, in these times, I just can't, I, I just cannot, cannot accept spending two, uh, two, two point five million dollars on both. But what I would like to do, I'd like to at least make the front of the existing billing, building, today's accessibility day. And I'd like to make sure we do that today, that that goes forward. It's not a big deal, probably seventy thousand dollars, but for 20 years, we've had an accessibility committee, and we've done, we've talked about it, we've done nothing with that. I'd like to do that. But I know that the staff put a lot of work into this. But at the very least, like, I would, I would like to defer it. I don't think that we're ready to spend that kind of money on a council chamber. And, and you know, there's a twelve and a half percent contingency in there? You know for sure, it's government. It's never twelve and a half percent on a renovation. I can tell you that from experience and from talking to a lot of people. This, this project needs a lot of, a lot of consideration. We're, we're doing a service delivery review. We have no idea where some of these jobs are going to land, where the space is going to come from, and I just think it's premature, and quite frankly, I can't justify it to taxpayers.
Okay.
Thank you, Warren. Just to speak to your, your comments, counselor, regarding the accessibility piece. Yes, so one of the things is included in the Sil's report and was highlighted is this building itself, not, not speaking to the, any rent across the street. We do need, it, it goes beyond just the ramp. There's significant accessibility code requirements that have to be done across the building, including the washroom, some entrance doorways, and other access points. So that would be part of the, if, if that's the direction we're going, that would be part of the inclusion of the work being done, is bringing the building up to our, our co-compliance on the accessibility pieces as well. And what, excuse me, and, and so, what's that number on the co-compliance?
It's just under six hundred thousand dollars.
But if you don't touch the inside of the building, you don't have to do that.
Actually, yes, as a public, public space building, we are required. We received our notice, I believe, in 2023? I think, I guess, I can get you that date on that, counselor, but yeah, we are required to be co-compliant on AODA.
So we've never been compliant, so, so as soon as we touch the outside, we, we have to be compliant. That's what you're telling me.
Just, it, it, as soon as we touch, it's not about touching things, we, we have to become client compliant, period. As a pub, as a public building.
Well, then that's, that's a priority then.
That's correct, that's correct.
So we should do that anyway.
Counselor, Ron?
A big question that I was going to ask is two, two questions, actually. It'd be nice to know what the value of the building across the road is worth roughly. Doesn't have to be a full estimate, but that would be one thing that would tell us what to do. And the second thing is, all of the space that we're moving in, out of, is going to be used for something. Are we going to, if we don't move, are we going to have a capacity problem trying to get stuff done that needs to be done with our own workforce? Sorry, missed the last part of it. We have a fair number of people that are trying to do their jobs properly, and there's not, there's a restricted amount of space for them to do it in. If we choose not to move from here, are we going to be able to operate effectively without moving to the other business, the other building?
We have space issues, I mean, a limitation on the space that we have right now. To Counselor Fury's point, I mean, with the service delivery review, if we are looking, expanding the engineering department, then the space obviously starts evaporating for us. And, and it's from a quality of space standpoint, so it's a tough question to answer off the top of my head. I guess, yes, we could get by, but it, it's from a, from a growth flexibility standpoint, there is, that doesn't exist by, by staying here. In its current form, excuse me.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I, particularly in light of this service review, you know, for instance, and then just, just throwing something out in, in midair as an example, so nobody get too excited. But if we brought, you know, all planning together, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that everybody would be in one area. You know, there's still could be people in Highlands East and Alguacan Highlands and so on. So, but I think that this review that we're going through will give us a better idea of what the structure. I mean, once you start, you know, you get your goals, and then you can design your structure, and then you decide how much room you need. I, I would strongly urge that we defer on, on this at this point until we have a better idea of what it is that we are going to need. Obviously, compliance we have to do, I'm, you know, no argument about that. But in terms of the building across the street and even, you know, and having the building across the street then allows you to do some of the renovations in here, so that's, you know, but I, I would, I would work on the compliance only and defer everything else until we have a better idea of what the structure is going to need and look like.
Sure.
Just to clarify your point, counsel, I, I understand what you're saying. One of the things we are looking at doing, and this by no means commits counsel to anything, is if we go to the position and issue the RFP, or the tender, excuse me, for the document, with the caveat everywhere of that it's not an approved project, it would just refine our costing more. So if we're having that discussion further down the road, we're dealing with a better sense of information, so I just put that up for council's consideration as well.
Counselor Perry?
I, I think that's the thin edge of the wedge, Gary, but anyway, I've, I've watched this happen before. You know, I, I, I agree with you. I, I just think that, for instance, IT, they don't have to all work out of the county building. They can work from the three other municipal offices, easily. IT works from everywhere, as Bob knows, and you know, Gary. So that's an option, option if you need a little more space. And there is an option, I looked at the back of the building, there is an option to do something there, the existing building, and it was interesting to hear when Jim Pine came for your interview, Gary, he said, my, what a nice council chamber you have.
He was just being nice.
Oh, I don't know.
Counselor Danielson?
Uh, but I'm always concerned about deferring projects because it, they, they just get more expensive as time goes by. Nothing gets cheaper. I'm just wondering if by putting out the RFP in such a way that, that things are broken out and we can look at, at what each area might individually cost and, and, and things that we might part of the project that we might defer and parts that we would see going ahead with, at least we'd have the information. If, I mean, if we decide not to go ahead with it, then, you know, that so be it. But, you know, I, I, I just am concerned that it, it ultimately, we're going to run out of space and, and that it's going to cost us even more than it does now. I also wonder if there's any opportunity for, for funding for the project.
Just specifically funny, I know, I know we were looking at the Green Municipal Fund, I think that's the name of it, so called. They modified the intake, so they canceled the one intake, and we're hoping there's another one going to fall, so we are looking. We just, it, that was our, our most optimist, optimistic goal was that one, but they modified the intake date, so.
Counselor Dayu?
Thanks, I agree largely with what's being said, very much like Counselor Danielson's idea of of scoping an RFP in a way that we can potentially do various pieces of it that could allow us to move forward in any direction in that building, rather than looking at the full thing as, as a single project. I think that's a really wise thing. I don't feel comfortable with surplusing the building because we will be expanding. I don't see how that is not possible. Our, our county is expanding, our needs are expanding, expectations are expanding, and even with service delivery review, and, you know, it would be for me a little bit shooting our foot to, you know, to get rid of a building in a trend of continual expansion. So I really like the idea of, of scoping an RFP that would allow us to make gentle progress, defer the complete replacement of the council chamber over there. I am quite interested in finding out more about sharing space with the Minden Hills council, whether that's possible, whether it's feasible for both sides. Certainly in the spirit of the shared, or of the service delivery review, that would be, you know, our, our institutions working better together with resources that we've got, rather than parsing out more and, and having additional expenses for things that, I don't want to say drive us apart, but it's, it's an opportunity that I think we should, we should really, really look at in the, you know, in the benefit of, of saving some, some taxpayers' money.
Gary?
Just a clarification point for counsel is the split now, if we're deciding whether or not to do the other side, like the, the, the other side of the road, the Land Registry Office, the, what we can do over here is limited to the accessibility compliance piece because the growth piece for us is this room, right? So, until that decision's made, pretty much limited at the compliance piece, which I, I think counsel understands that's something we have to do going forward. But I do think, and to, I'm repeating myself, and forgive me, but I think there is the opportunity to get a little more information if that's, if that's necessary. But I, well, and the last part was with respect to the surplus of the, of the building, while we did include that as an option with just respecting the whole management side of the council's decision, that is not a recommendation of staff. We are not recommending we surplus that building because we do think the, the need is there. But as a lot of people sit around the table, it, this may not be the right time. But I think it should stay in, in, in our thought process as to when we get there for future.
Counselor Perry?
Well, I think if you were moving, if you were moving a whole department or two departments over there, that makes some sense. But to, to, to spend a whole lot of money on a council chamber that's used, what, 10% of the time? I don't think that makes any sense, and it won't make any sense to taxpayers, I can tell you that. But Liz, your point is good. Yes, stuff does go up in price, but i- in the real world, construction costs are going down. We went through four, four years of hell here with COVID, and, and now is the most expensive time to price anything. I've talked to several contractors that don't have work, they've lowered their prices to get work. And that's the way the, the, the outside world is working. Maybe not government, but the outside world is.
Counselor Dayu and Counselor McCaughney.
Um, yes, Gary, thanks for that clarification. I think I was thinking more in line of if we can improve the HVAC now without, you know, without committing to a, a space use or anything along those lines that just allows us to move forward a little bit without the commitment, then that might be really worth having scoped out.
We can look at that, counselor.
Well?
Yeah, I, I think that that we should sell that building. And hopefully, if we get make sure that some developer created some affordable housing in there, it would be fantastic. I think there's a, some real valuable space for some housing in there. And I, I think that we should definitely upgrade this old building here. It's still sound, especially the accessibility part of it, and there is room at the back, like Murray said, for expansion if, if needed. But I think that's, this is a very large amount of money we're talking about, and the, the accessibility has got to be done to this building anyways. So that part is a given, but I think that, you know, spending that money over there for, like Murray keeps saying, with them, 10, 15% of the time is, is a waste of taxpayers' money. And I think that we should be really concentrating on today, making a decision that we are going to get rid of that building, and hopefully it's going to be some real nice apartments in there, something for what, what's really needed.
So I guess there has been suggestion about deferring, I've heard. I'm just not sure where to go with this right now, but Gary?
Yeah, I, I just, it, it's, a bunch of millions of dollars is a lot of money. But having said that, I'm not, I, I, I'm not comfortable with just basically offloading the building. I, I, I'm just not sure that's a smart move. And the reason why I don't think it's a smart move is maybe what we've been talking about is reverse the rules of what we were doing, putting, putting some of the, of the staff departments over there versus having it, and, and I don't know, do something with this, basically expand it a little bit, but the cost will be significantly less. But, but I, I think we should find out what, what the current state of affairs is in terms of costing. I think, I think it's important. First off, we isolate how much it's going to cost to upgrade this building, because that's, but unless somebody can figure out how we're going to sell this building, doesn't make any sense. We need to upgrade this building so it's compliant. So to me, that, that number is extremely important. And if it was me, I, I would like to make a decision on that as, as quickly as possible, to be able to determine what we can and shouldn't do with, with this particular building. With regards to the other one, yeah, the two things, one, what would it cost us to, to, to renovate the building, and then secondly, on the open market, what would it be worth? But something tells me that to purchase a building like that, even in its condition, would be far greater than what we would get for it. I just, I just can't see us making any money selling it.
Okay.
Just, just on the question with respect to the cost of co-compliance, they still mentioned it's about six hundred thousand dollars to, to bring this building to co, co, compliant.
Murray?
Well, I, I'd just like to clarify what I said about putting departments over there. My point there was that it would be used five days a week, not two days a month, or three days a month. And so that, that was my point. See, so I wasn't saying that that's the solution for it, but, but anyway, just to clarify that. You, you know, it, it doesn't matter where we go here, we're just going in a circle. So I think, Mr. Warren, you need to put a resolution on the floor. If deferring is what we're going to do, then let's do that. If we're going to sell, let's do that. But you need a whole lot of, of other information before you do that.
Gary?
I think I'm going to need, with counsel's indulgence, like, five or 10 minutes to figure out what that resolution is, or options to put on the floor, if that's okay.
Yep. Do you want to break for lunch?
Yeah, we can, I, I only need probably 10 minutes to do that. Yeah, I.
Lunch is here.
Lunch is here, yes, so, yeah.
Then let's break for lunch.
I'm just waiting for Travis.
Very good, thank you.
Gary.
Thank you. So, based on the conversations with council, Andrea and so on, I had a little discussion just running some of the numbers through our head and some options, I think some what would be viable options for council is Council Fury connected? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there we go. So, I can put two options on the floor and bear with me as I explain option one. It's it's a little bit different where we're talking about, I think it achieves the same purpose or a purpose. So, option one could be if we forget about across the road to kind of Council Fury's point about investing in a building that's going to be used two times a month or whatever the number was being. One of the options available to us would be to proceed with the renovations of this building, which would be within the original budgeted money that council put forward for the the total total project would be within that number. And then we would would share council premises with Minden Hills. And then we'd have money left over from what we could actually invest in some renovations to accommodate our needs because we're a bigger councils in there, so there may be some modifications. And all that could take place under the original budgeted price as we forward addresses our long term longer term expansion needs. Still leaves that asset untouched across the way if council decides that yes, it's something we can dispose of that asset or it's got another purpose beyond beyond what we're doing. All within the original budget price. And then the second option would be that we move forward with the the compliance requirements for this building, which is mentioned roughly around six hundred thousand. There are some deficiencies in this room itself that we could we could address those basically from a from an IT standpoint. And others in this building would add between the hundred and two hundred thousand dollars to that that cost. Again, all with under the price of the other one, but would address the issue around modernization of the council space here and the AOD compliance in this building. So, th- those would be the two options or obviously the third option is we just maintain status quo, which is just do the compliance options here, which is six hundred thousand dollars worth of plus remains for funding. So, we're not, I'll throw that on the table for council consideration.
Counselor Carter.
So, in the first option, then you wouldn't be doing all of the compliance for this building because you wouldn't need to do this floor, is that correct?
Uh, no, in the in the first option, this building would be renovated in its entirety and this would be this would become working space. This would become working space.
Right, right, sorry. You tell me what B is again, please.
E would be the the option with B is to do the code compliance piece, which is roughly that six hundred thousand dollars mark, which brings in compliance with our AODA piece pieces, excuse me. And then the modernization of this room for council's purposes. Because there is some work we need to do in here to to modernize this room, so it would be a combination of the two. The the ju- just to expand on my piece, the difference between the options are is the first option takes takes into account the future expansion piece, so no matter what happens, we have growth, we've built growth into this building to move forward. The second option allows us to be compliant, modernize the council space and then we'll we'll deal with growth as growth happens in a different fashion.
So, you'd you'd renovate this room and council would stay here and also the accessibility would all be brought up to standards in this building?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so you're looking if I might just add one, so you're looking at a difference between in costing would be if my numbers are correct, you're correct, Andrea, about eight hundred thousand dollars. But both options are within the money we've already budgeted for. Right, so it's we're not at wouldn't be asking for new money, it'd be included in our original proposal.
Counselor Dave.
And then further question for clarification for option B, then what happens to the building across the road?
Um, we we I believe in Silicon Valley, I believe we've got to the point where it can be maintained now like it's the mold's gone and we can secure it so it wouldn't further deteriorate. And that could be a future decision of council whether we sell it or do anything with it.
Okay, so surplusing is not part of either option.
It can be, but it's not necessary.
Counselor Ryle.
So, if just to go back now, I think I got B sorted out pretty good, so with A, we're talking about sharing the facility, which would be the the Minden Hills area. Yeah, and it would be with them and obviously upgrading that facility to to accommodate our roll bar needs. And then and then that would allow this entire building to be renovated as we reach the plan. And across the road just kind of sort of sits there and determine what we could do later, which could be all kinds of stuff.
Yep, that's correct.
Murray, did you have your hand up?
I did, I just so just to clarify, like what would we be, I'm all in favor of sharing. So, what would we be sharing? How would we share those facilities? Like, for what reason?
So, the the facility, the shared facility would be the Minden Council chambers. Uh, Minden Hills, excuse me, council chambers would be shared between the county and 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 Minden Hills and the court, but we would have we would have resources that we could help with any renovations to the building to comment our needs because we're just a bigger council, so there would be some issues, not issues, some stuff that we'd have to address. So, it would be a joint project between us, the township and the and the province. Uh, but that would be the sharing, Murray would be the council chamber, we'd have a joint council chambers. Somewhere we talked about for this building across the road, it's just it'd be the Minin one versus sharing Minin Hills sharing one of the county spaces.
It's pretty close, it's pretty close and it makes some sense, really.
Liz.
I just wonder what costs would be associated with us contributing to and or sharing with the Minden Hills Council Chamber? And how that would impact the existing budget that we've got?
Um, I can't give you an exact answer on that, there would be some money available, I can't give you an exact figure and without having the conversation uh, going forward on the on that with Minden Hills, uh, but just given where we were going with it, I think there's there is the opportunity to to do that. Yeah, yeah, it's it would be that side of things, not construction, but use.
Any other questions, comments? I I was leaning towards the option, first option.
I'm leaning towards option B. We need to vote.
I guess, sure, we'll put it to a vote then, I guess, Gary.
Just for clarification, I can walk through the options.
Yeah, good. Sorry, Murray, just so we'll I'll walk through the options both sides, everybody understands what's being put on the flavor and then we can entertain motions on so option one, uh, and so both options don't include the old Land Street office. Okay, so option one would be the complete renovation of this building um, with respect for administrative purposes. And then in agreement with Minden Hills Township of Minden Hills, that we would share council facilities. And and there may be a small contribution for us to meet Arnie's furniture, IT, those sort of things there and we so we would share services, that space with Minden Hills, that's option one. And that would come in that from a costing standpoint, that's within the 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 budget price of that was approved by council at moving to the twenty twenty five budget, so it'd be the money that's already been allocated. Option two is completing the AODA compliance pieces for this building, which is roughly around the six hundred thousand dollar mark. And then doing renovations to this room for council purposes that would modernize it for council's needs going forward. So, this would it would look different up here, but this would still be the council chambers. And then combined, you're probably looking at about eight hundred thou- if you do that with the co-compliance, you're probably looking between sake of argument between seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars for that complete piece. Um, and so those would be the options.
Uh, so the okay, so the the problem with option B is that it doesn't provide any additional space for staff. Okay, I missed that piece.
Yeah, I think I have a tendency to lean too towards option A, why am I saying that? Because we're a council, we're great, you know, we're great, we do all kinds of good stuff, but it's our people who do all the work. And if they get compromised in their ability to do work, then it basically reflects on us, so I I would be in favor of option A. Go up at least investigating and getting the photo, getting a report.
Yeah, just quickly, I'm not trying to be negative on that it wouldn't work, but what would happen if that situation whereas we got rid of this room here, renovated it? And it didn't work with the Minden Hills.
I I'm I guess from that standpoint, I I don't know, I'm not sure how it wouldn't work unless the courts threw a monkey wrench at us. Um, then
Don't assume.
Yeah, good, thank you, good, good point, I appreciate that. Um, and and then and we'd be looking at doing, we'd have to accommodate ourselves someplace else. Murray's got a question, yeah.
Murray?
Well, I'm always trying to think outside the box here. If we contract this so that we have to move, say we have to temporarily move to somewhere else like we did in Wilberforce, by the way, for a meeting and we do this in July and August when we're off and the con- and the renovations is done to this room in that time period with the contractor, then we will be right back in the council chamber again. I I don't think this is a big issue to solve, I think it's all about how we handle the contracts.
Good. Sorry, just for clarity, counselor, so yeah, I I appreciate your, that was our goal originally was to have most of the construction done in the summertime. What we're talking was is the longer piece, the longer term piece, yeah, so if it if we go forward where it's just the compliance piece plus the renovation of this building, you're exactly correct. It would happen, we try to get it done in the summer and if we have to go someplace else for a meeting for a month or two, that would be part of it. The other part of it was was a permanent relocation of council meetings into a shared spot with Minden Hills in their current facility.
I'd like to work with Minden Hills, but I don't think we need to be there permanently, I'd like to stay home where we are. And I I think option two is a is is fine and it can be done. And we can work with them for a meeting or two, but I this is a no brainer, we don't need to leave the building we're in. Just get get it done and and to Liz's point, we don't know that we need any other space right now. So, and I I hear her, but I just think that we're getting ahead of the horse here.
Counselor Dayo.
Um, thanks, I respectfully disagree with Counselor Fury, I think option A is excellent. We are looking to working together and sharing the resources that are already there. Um, any additional space is going to be allocated, as Counselor Ryle said, to the staff, to the people who are putting in day in, day out, all of the effort on behalf of the community. And we are saving taxpayers' money and we are holding on to the possibility of expanding should we need to. For me, that's four very solid reasons to go for option A.
All right, um, someone can put a motion on the table, I guess will be either A or B.
Could I have a quick question? And then I'll put one on, I just want to know what the schedule is um, for for the improvements to your council chambers, like what's the timing?
Whatever it was, it was like a, you know, it was like it goes on five year increments and then they they had a number of automatic renewals. Well, at this point, all the renewals have ended. And so we are now negotiating with them, like they use it once, maybe twice a month. You know, we use it twice a month.
I'm just trying to fit in the timing of, you know, when we would do our construction, when your construction is.
Well, we have no necessarily construction, okay? If we we've been experimenting with setting up tables in different ways and having the room, but if we if we were working together because of, you know, again, this is a bit larger council, um, than, you know, the idea of the horseshoe table or whatever could come up and we've can figure out what we it is we would put in there. But it would be, you know, it would be during this summer period.
I I would move that we move forward with option A.
All right.
I would like to just comment on on the option B. I think that this has been the county chambers for a long time. And I I I think it's great that if we needed to go to down the street to Minden for a few meetings, then we should go, but I think we should refresh in this area and and make this our permanent home for today and for the future. And that's just, that's my opinion.
Right. Yeah, a second for option A. Counselor Ryle. I have a feeling this could be a tiebreaker.
So, any further discussion on it?
Murray?
I'm just going to request a recorded vote here.
Okay.
No more questions, so the um, move by Counselor Danielson, second by Counselor Ryle, that we proceed with option A being the complete renovation of eleven Newcastle Street and and enter into discussions with Minin Hills for the shared services of the council chambers. That's, sorry, that is the motion. And recorded vote, this is my first one here. Um, Counselor Dayo.
Aye.
Counselor Fury.
Aye, aye.
Counselor McCackney. Counselor Burton. Warden, yes, oh, sorry, sorry. Warden Burton. Counselor Ryle.
Yay.
Counselor Shaw.
Yay.
Counselor Daniels, what's that Deputy Warden Danielson. Counselor Carter.
Aye.
We are seven, one in favor. Carried.
Thank you. Liz?
I'm never turning it off again. Um, to your concern, uh, you know, I, I do think that we've still left ourselves open to some options. I know that the options are across the street as opposed to in this room, but you know, we've left ourselves open to options for the county. To be using county facilities in the future.
So, um, we have to close right now?
We need a motion.
Okay, just, uh, show hands.
Andrew and Scott.
Councillor Carter and councillor Danielson.
Go ahead, Murray?
As lo, as long as they don't charge us for parking, bud.
Or rental fees.
At least we can park on the level down there.
We, we do charge if you, uh, if you recharge your.
We do charge if you recharge your electric vehicle.
Well, fair enough, fair enough.
Sorry, councillor, uh, Warden?
Carter, councillor Carter and councillor Ryle.
Uh, that in accordance to Miss Black, section two thirty-nine F, Halliburton County Council, enter into the closed session for following reasons. To receive advice is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
All in favor?
Carried.
Thank you. Uh, planning development charges background study. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Warden. Um, in July twenty twenty-two, the previous term of county council awarded the development charge background study and its accompanying bylaws. For the county and all four local municipalities to Watson and Associates. Um, as the project was underway, it was found that the twenty fifteen growth projections available for the county were not accurate enough to sufficiently calculate. The proposed DC rates and to resolve this, Watson Associates undertook a separate project for the county, creating a new comprehensive growth strategy document, which council recently endorsed. Um, the work for both the completed growth strategy and the DC background study have resulted in budget overages due to a variety of factors, some of which are detailed in the staff report for council's knowledge. Um, the two projects are a combined approximately twenty-five thousand dollars over budget at this time. In discussions with Watson and Associates, they have agreed to honor the twenty twenty-two hourly rates established. Um, in the original quote, so as to not further exceed those overages. Um, however, staff do anticipate some additional cost should the DC project move forward. Um, as such, we're here today to receive council direction with respect to the development charge background study. Um, the report outlines a variety of options for council to consider for moving forward or not moving forward, um, which do all have merits to them. Um, however, it's staff's recommendation that option one be chosen, which would result in the need to include an additional, uh, sorry. The need to include additional funds in the twenty twenty-six budget to see the project to its completion. Um, very brief overview of the report. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Questions? Murray? Murray?
Well, the province is talking about doing away with development charges and here we're going in the wrong direction again.
Okay. I, I can jump in a little bit on that. So they, they're not getting away from development charges, just the, the extent of a development charges. But your points well taken councillor, the, the landscape has significantly changed on DCs in the, with the passing of the, I think it was bill five that just went through that significantly impacts DCs.
Question, Bob?
But at the same time, we desperately need these if we, if we are going to have expansion at all, if we're going to do anything with. Whether it's, uh, you know, trying to develop mini systems in, uh, in rural areas or expanding. For instance, this, this, um, precise thing on long-term care, you know, what it may do to impact the, uh, the system in, in Minden. Um, you know, we need, we need development charges. There's people who are coming to us with projects. You know, uh, there's, there's no way that the existing tax base can absorb this. And, uh, so I, I would one hundred percent agree with, uh, with. The recommendation of going with option one to get all five, because there's no use just doing it at this, at, at the county, because then you can't collect any of the money. It's, it's at the, uh, it's at the, uh, the municipal level. So I would, I would concur with one.
Any other questions, comments? We'll put one on the table. Oh, Murray?
Yeah, one more question. Well, is there, is there no, isn't, isn't there a reason? Or is there a reason that the townships themselves can't bring in development charges? Like, I don't think our township will. Will want to, because I, every developer I've talked to in the last year said if they had to pay the development charges that they have to in the city, they wouldn't spend a cent up here. So you can, it can, it works both ways, but I agree with Bob, we need the money. But I, I don't know that, uh, that if, if a township wants to do it, why don't they do it?
Elizabeth?
Uh, through you, Warden, there, there is an option in the report that would. Somewhat address that and give the ability for potentially, um. One or some of the local municipalities to opt out. I think that if, if the. If only the county, uh, pursues development charges, there's a lot of, uh, potential for the collection left on the table. Um, because the greatest beneficiary is the, the local municipality when it comes to development charges. Um, the original scope of the project included bylaws for all, all five municipalities to be created. And, um, ultimately it is up to the local councils whether or not they pass their bylaw for enacting development charges. Um, in the end, um, it wouldn't be at the county level, the, the local municipalities would each, all four would have to pass their own bylaw. So it is up to each individual municipality, the existing scope includes the creation of five bylaws. Whether or not they're enacted is up to those councils.
Cease?
Just a, a, a quick understanding of when we're talking about development charges is. I totally agree with, with councillor Ferry that if we put a fixed amount in there, it's probably going to scare off a bunch of developers. But at the end of the day, a lot of the developers understand and recognize that there is going to be services required if they're building something new. And they also are not, uh, that they, they have money to be made. Therefore, there's an investment in some way, shape or form for them. So the question becomes, do we put together a fixed schedule? Which, I'm not so sure that's the right way to go. Or do we, we come up with some kind of an opportunity that, that we can negotiate with a specific developer? To come up with a number that's representative of that particular project? What does that do? Well, uh, the question I have to ask is, I'm just a young person trying to build a house. Do I have to pay development charges? Or am I exempt? Because that's going to create a problem for housing within our own area. So I, I'm just a little bit concerned about how the development charge program. Would be defined and then implemented to make sure that it's fair. And we recuperate, uh, the monies that we need to recuperate on projects that are going to cost us a, a lot of money. And at the same time, we don't restrict housing. So I, I don't have an answer. That's, it's just a, a situation that I, I'm hoping we can address.
Elizabeth?
Through you, Warden. Uh, DCs can't really be applied on a case by case basis. Once the bylaws in place, the, the rates that are in the bylaw are what's applied. Um, what, what is typically seen in a DC bylaw is, are different rates for different scenarios though. So if you are in the rural area, not on municipal services, your rate is different than if you were in town connecting to municipal services. Um, and the whole premise is that growth pays for growth instead of the existing tax base paying for growth to occur, right? So, um, it can't be altered depending on the person that walks through the door, what they're paying. But the use and, and where it's located makes the rate different. Um, and there is also, I believe it's not being scrapped, uh, there's so many changes to the DC act over the past year. But, um, there is also a phase in, so it wouldn't be a, you know, a, kind of like a switch being flipped where one day there's no DCs and then he passed the bylaw and then there's full DCs. Um, there's, uh, there, the province has a, a phase in approach where over a certain amount of years, the percentage of that ultimate DC rate is applied. So it's, it's not just like a night and day, it's a gradual introduction to DCs so that people can start to get used to them and factor them into their performance when they're developing. Um, I hope that answers your question.
And Bob?
Yeah, I think it's really important that, you know, if somebody is building in a rural area, they have to put in a well and a septic. And then if, but if they're in, you know, the town of Minden, they don't have to do either of those. And everybody else has to pay for them to go onto the system. So I think it's, you know. Do development charges scare people away? I mean, I think if you look at Peterborough, where, what is it seventy, between seventy and a hundred thousand dollars per, per unit? Yeah, that might scare people away, but the, but the point is, is that. Who is going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for the growth? Who's going to pay for that, that, that next house that puts you over the limit on your, uh, on your, uh, your waste treatment or your wells? You know, we have, we have to have a way where, you know, all we've been worried about over the last number of years is about paying for infrastructure. And, you know, our infrastructure gap, well, this is part of the cause of our infrastructure gap. And so, you know, if people want to build here and live here, well, they have to pay their fair share. That's, that's how I look at it. I'm not looking at a money grab or anything like that. It's just paying your fair share.
Cease?
Totally agree. Uh, not disagreeing with anything that you're saying. I'm merely looking at it from the point of view of, of options that are on the table. That will help us pay for our infrastructure, but at the same time do not defer, as, as councillor Ferry said, people from wanting to invest here. Now, I know in, in many cases, we have the ability to either, we, we put a fee in place, an example would be building, uh, permits, or it could be dumping fees. At which point municipality has the right to either waive them or reduce them depending on what it is that they're working. Is this something we could also do? Not, not have a variable one? It's fixed, but if we sit down with the development and they're seriously interested in coming in, can we negotiate with them a discount?
Yours? Um, so I think there's two parts to your question, but the first part being, so the act allows for exemptions, right? It doesn't allow for discounting. But even if you say you're going to create an exemption category, the, the, the thing to bear in mind is that whatever the value of that exemption is. It can't be added to the people that currently pay the DC, so it has to be absorbed by the municipality, right? So to councillor Carter's point, yes, you are giving a break, if you will, to. A, a, a group of, a, a class, if you will, in your community, but that delta still has to be picked up. It's absorbed by the municipality, right? So it doesn't, so you, you, you can't pass it on to the, the classes that pay the D, DC. You have to extract the value of the exemption from the DC and it's picked up by the municipality.
Okay, any other questions? Resolution?
Uh, that report PLN ten twenty twenty-five be received and further that development charge background study be referred to the twenty twenty-six budget for further consideration by council.
Someone move? Councillor Carter, second by councillor Shell. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Uh, planning department, work planning.
Thank you, Warden. Um, I'll keep the update presentation brief. However, I'd like to highlight a couple of items for council. Um, the LIDAR project has admittedly taken a lot longer to get, uh, to completion than anticipated. We're meeting with Gannaraska in early June to wrap up the two-zone mapping that they had undertaken to make the mapping consistent with the provincial planning statement. Um, and I'm hoping to have a comprehensive presentation on the mapping system to council in July with a public rollout shortly after that. On another note, um, we're making a concerted effort to update the department's web pages to provide as much information to the public as possible. Which is a significant departure from past practice. Uh, so far we have overhauled the shoreline bylaw page, um, a link which is provided in the staff report for your perusing pleasure. This also included a better, uh, it includes a better complaint reporting form that allows staff to investigate quicker and more comprehensively if someone reports an issue. And we'll be tackling the other planning pages shortly with a focus on putting the official plan and all relevant planning applications online for the public's use. Um, and with that, if council has any questions about my report, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Any questions?
Resolution?
Uh, the planning report zero seven twenty twenty-five, uh, regarding the planning department work, like update be received for this information.
Someone move councillor Danielson, second by councillor Carter? All in favor? It's carried. Uh, economic development, tourism. Jelica.
Good afternoon, members of council and Warden, Burton. Um, before you, I have my second quarter, quarter tourism activity report with some highlights. Um, I was supposed to be here early in the year, but the ice storm, uh, delayed that. So here I am. We've had a busy spring. Um, the tourism department was successful in receiving a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Through the federal government, which we will be using to enhance the High Caliburn Festival happening this year. Um, one of the things we are looking at and the main purpose of the grant was to upgrade our website registration process. Um, it's a little bit antiquated and we wanted to streamline the process and make it easier for people registering. And the, uh, platform that we have researched and agreed upon can be used on the corporate website for other events like our tourism and business summit. Things that require people to register, so it can be used for other purposes as well, which is great. Um, we're also, uh, beginning to launch a new marketing campaign that focuses on traveling local this year and supporting Canadian destinations. We've seen a big push in this area, especially from Destination Ontario and Destination Canada, as people's travel attitudes are changing a bit this year. So we are going to do that and we're really, um, promoting day trips as well, uh, for surrounding areas. And we're also working with our regional tourism organization on two projects this year. One is a data project and the other is a marketing and digital assets campaign, uh, that will take place in the fall. And this is to, uh, promote small rural destinations. That's what our regional tourism organization primarily has. Um, so that's the theme of that campaign is small towns, big heart. And I'm here if you have any questions or any, any comments.
Questions? Resolution? That staff report EDT seven twenty twenty-five, second quarter tourism report be approved.
Someone move, but councillor Ryle, second by councillor McCackney. All in favor? It's carried?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jelica. Uh, physician, physician recruitment, Scott?
Good afternoon, Warden and members of council. Um, just in front of you today is Wendy's, uh, physician recruitment, um, status update. Um, just a couple of items to note, um, as you'll, you'll see in the report, um, Wendy's, uh, begun kind of a more formal tracking process. And when it comes to physician leads, we'll be utilizing that to refine our marketing tactics. Um, and programming efforts if she's attending, um, conferences or trade shows. Um, we did host our physician, uh, annual physician appreciation event at Heather Lodge on May twentieth. Um, very well received, um, as always, and we'll just be as every year move forward with that event. We just look at enhancing it and, and trying to do a better job. Um, and then lastly, um, just wanted to, to make, I'm, I'm sure council is aware, um, but. Uh, as Wendy does a better job with, uh, recruiting doctors, it just makes our, uh, kind of financing a little bit more challenging. So going into, going into budget season, we will have, be, be having a fairly comprehensive conversation about, um, what that request would look like to. Um, replenish the physician, physician recruitment reserve, um, understanding that that discussion and our decision can't come in a silo. We have a lot of different, um, impacts to take into place. Um, but just wanted to make aware, make you aware of that as we, um, I'm sure I'll be getting a, an email from our treasurer about budget preparations in the next probably four weeks. So, uh, and with that, uh, happy to field any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Any questions? Cease.
Scott, you probably don't have the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. With what's going on south of the border and the amount of cuts that are being made to their healthcare program, there's going to be a tremendous number of people who just can't afford to have a doctor, which means some doctors are just not going to be able to live, at least not the living that they want to be down there. Do you see anything at all that's coming down the pike or that we've seen so far that indicate that some of the American doctors may want to go?
Through you, Warden. I haven't seen anything directly, or Wendy hasn't indicated anything directly related to that. She's indicated really what we're seeing right now is a lot of interest from Europe, mainly the UK, Ireland, and Australia seems to be the other hotspot right now. So, one thing we will have to take into consideration, even when we're looking at our budget next year, is just even the cost of immigration for some physicians. Although it might not appear like a lot, it's, I think what you're going to see is a lot of communities even trying to, you know, dip into that field and say, we're helping with that process. So, you know, Wendy's done a really good job of streamlining the LMIA process for international physicians to try and make that as easy as possible. And really, she knows the ins and outs of that. So, you know, we can be a field expert in looking through that. But I haven't heard a lot coming from the US. I've seen, you know, news, but that's just really anecdotal now. So, thank you.
Resolution?
The staff report EDT 082025, physician recruitment status update be received as information.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ferry, second by Counselor Dayo. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, IT. Mike.
Good afternoon, Warden Burton, members of council. So, before you today is my IT work plan update. Some items to note for council. IT is currently working on a project management software solution for staff to use here at the county. Also, at the same time, trying to stand up a project management framework to complement the new software. We continue to work on Wreckers Management Project. We have all the departments at the county onboarded and we've assisted the municipalities with their implementations as well. We are working on several RFIs and RFPs, both leading and participating in. We're doing a cemetery software RFI, leading that process for some of our municipalities. And we're also helping our member municipalities with an RFP for election software for next year. The cybersecurity gap analysis was done and was presented to county council, I think, last month. And I'm scheduling presentations to your local councils throughout the summer. The NG 911 Data Management Project, which was, which, sorry, that RFP was awarded. And that project is underway with a workshop with, oh, a lot of people through across the county municipalities and planning and public works and fire EMS scheduled for July. We've done a lot of work on an incident response plan, a cybersecurity incident response plan that I'm hoping to bring forward before much longer. We're redoing it, aligning it with the EMS system that our emergency management operations use. So, using the kind of roles and responsibilities of that into a cybersecurity incident response plan. And our help desk staff completed 1,274 service desk tickets to date. So, I think that's about it in terms of the key findings from the report. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Resolution?
That reported ITS 042025 Information Technology Work Plan Update be received as information.
Move? Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Danielson. All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Bylaws?
Be resolved that bylaw 4306 being a bylaw to establish a tariff of fees for the county. Halbert be considered to be read a first, second, and third time.
If someone move? Counselor Dayo, a second by Counselor Danielson. All in favor? It's carried. Information by law?
The bylaw 4307 being a bylaw confirmed the proceedings of the May 28, 2025 meeting, Halbert County Council be considered, be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Someone move? Counselor McCackney, second by Counselor Carter. All in favor? It's carried.
25 meeting, Halbert County Council be adjourned at 2:04 PM.
Counselor Carter, second by Counselor McCack, or Counselor McCackney, second by Counselor Carter. All in favor? It's carried.